I have six o'clock. I'll call this regularly scheduled meeting to order. Mr. Daniels, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Councilmember Bruins.
Present.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Here.
And Mayor Middleton.
Here.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. This meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, October 31st at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed at the city's YouTube channel.
Great, next item, please.
Next item is approval of agenda.
I would like to move the presentation to happen after council, comments by council members.
A second.
Okay, can I get an approval then?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item?
Next item is public comment. And members of the public may address the council on any agenda item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please either complete a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself. If participating via Zoom, use the raise hand function or star nine from a telephone to indicate your desire to speak. When your name is called, you may either step up to the podium, or I will allow you to unmute your microphone to speak.
Do we have any comment online?
I do not have any on Zoom.
I have several public comments for item number nine, but do we have any public comment on any other subject? Seeing none, next item, please.
The next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
Ms. Bruins, kick us off.
Thank you. So this past week, I attended my Neighborhood Association meeting in Chayson, and as always, they have a very full program. And so on that was the work being done at Old Auburn Road in Wintergreen. And so as you may, if you drive by there, have may have seen, I can't even tell you how many oak trees were planted, but a lot. And these were planted as mitigation efforts for the development at Mitchell Village. So happy to see new trees planted in our community. We had a presentation by the Citrus Heights Water District about their future plans, which was very interesting. Our Neighborhood Association, which is seven, eight, nine, is going to be supporting Christmas Family Project again this year. So, and there were some other announcements, just of events that have already happened, like our 25th anniversary celebration last Saturday, which was a phenomenal event here at Citrus Hall with the Capitol Pops. And quite a red letter day for us as Citrus Heights citizens to finally say we're 25 years old. The other thing I just want to report out on is last night's event. Our police department and our PAL organization put on a trunk or treat that was, I would say, second to none in the area. I've heard there are estimates of between 2,000 and 3,000 kids that went through that last night. And I was there for about the first hour of it, and there was a steady stream of costume children of all ages. Want to thank our police department and the business community and the other agencies that came out. We had over 35 stations where the kids could get candy, and we had a music cart, I don't know what you call it, with bubbles and robots, and it was, it was a great evening. And so I know our police officers that were there last night are exhausted today because it went on for four hours. Thank you to all of you.
Okay. Mr. Daniels.
Thank you. Not too much, nothing over the last couple of weeks, just some looking forwards tomorrow. Heights Church is putting on a trunk or treat type of event also. I don't know if we'll live up to the PD's incredible show, but that is a place to take your kids to do some safe trick-or-treating if you like. I think it starts at four o'clock, I'm not sure. But if you check on that, again, it's Heights Church on Sylvan. And then Monday is Halloween. And just a plea, man, watch your driving, watch your driving. You'll get there, slow down a little bit. I'm shocked every year at somebody's driving in a neighborhood while I've got my kid out trick-or-treating. Just shocked because you're not going to get there much faster when you get into a neighborhood by going some sort of reasonable speed. So please just slow it down and let everybody get there safely. And know for sure that a child will dart out in front of you at some point because it's going to happen. So that's it.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I had Regional Transit Monday night, and that's probably one of the easiest meetings I've ever run. It was all consent calendar. It wasn't the shortest by any means, but consent calendar and the manager's report, and that was about it, so nothing really to report out on that. The other night, this week, I had the honor of attending the Police Department Family Bridge Night, and I thought they were all going to be playing cards, but it's actually a way, we had dinner, and it was a way for the families to meet the other officers that their loved one works with, and just very neat that they're doing that program. And of course, yeah, that concert with the Capitol Pops for our 25th anniversary was a lot of fun Saturday. And also enjoyed the State of the Union. Good job, Mayor. And with that, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. Yes, State of the City was an awesome event. We had a lot of community support out, and we talked about all the accomplishments in Citrus Heights, and I was honored to be able to present that. Also, in the last hour, I got some extremely great news from the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, and they let us know that we are two steps away to getting funding for Green Means Go, from Green Means Go for Sunrise Tomorrow. We're being recommended for $160,000 towards that project. So very exciting to see that our mall project is moving forward, and people are actually catching on to the vision of what is Citrus Heights and Sunrise Mall.
Thanks.
And with that... Oh, I am sorry. Oh, my God.
That's all right.
Vice Mayor, oh, my goodness. Vice Mayor, please.
I'm easy to miss. So I had a library board meeting today, and I enjoy that board a lot. We actually came, fell one member short of a quorum, so we weren't able to really do any business. We had lots of time to sort of chat with each other and get to know each other a little bit better. And, but we will have to have a special meeting where we can get a quorum because we have some contracts we have to, have to approve in order for that to move forward, and that's really critical timeframe of that. So I did also attend the State of the City, and great job, Mayor, for your presentation also. Ash Feeney, the city manager, did a wonderful job there. It was a really enjoyable event, and I would encourage you next year to attend. So I also attended the trunk or treat last night. We shined. It was great. It was really, a really great event. I couldn't believe how many kids were there. Unfortunately, I couldn't bring any of my grandkids this time, but, because it's a school night. So, but that's, that's really all I had. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. And with that, next item?
Next item is presentation number four. Presentation of a proclamation honoring October as National Manufacturing Month.
Vice Mayor, if you would.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
All right. So I have a proclamation here, and we have our guest, Kevin McGrew from Siemens Mobility. If you'd step forward to the podium, please, Kevin. I'm going to read the proclamation, and then you can respond. So we do this every year. October is Manufacturing Month. It is a, an activity that's very near and dear to my heart. I've been in manufacturing my entire life, and, and I love bringing people into the trade. And Kevin McGrew with SVMA is a big, big part of that, of bringing people into the manufacturing trade where there are very great paying jobs and great benefits. And anybody that's interested, please reach out to me. So I'll get on with this here. So I'm not going, I'm going to skip the whereas's and just get, kind of get to it. So, City of Citrus Heights proclamation recognizing October 2022 as Manufacturing Awareness and Appreciation Month. Manufacturing Day is celebrated nationally on the first Friday of each month of October to showcase their facilities in an effort to educate community and about manufacturing career opportunities. By the way, that, this is the, the entire month is celebrated locally here. This is where facilities like Siemens open their doors to, to high schools, to tours. It's a very impressive facility. So moving on, manufacturers provide over 35,000 jobs in the Sacramento region and 12,480,000 jobs nationwide. And manufacturing is the most important industry in the United States, contributing nearly $2.2 trillion to our economy. For every dollar spent, another $1.89 is added to the economy. And for every manufacturing worker hired, there are another four employees hired in an adjacent market. And the average manufacturing worker in the United States earns $82,000, $82,023 annually, including pay and benefits. And over the next decade, nearly 3.5 million manufacturing jobs will likely be needed, and 2 million are expected to go unfilled due to the skills gap. So, and increasingly, the exposure of manufacturing career within the local area to our students, educators, business owners, media, and politicians is needed to bridge the gap in skilled labor shortage and create a viable career pathways for students and adults. Manufacturing is, and educational systems such as the Sacramento Valley Manufacturing Alliance, Sierra College, Los Rios Community College District, Power and Alliance, Valley Vision, Sacramento State University, California Community Colleges, United States Congress, Golden Sierra Manufacturing and Technology Association, SME, Sacramento Valley, that's Society of Manufacturing Excellence, Sacramento Valley Chapter 145, and the California Food Process will work together to promote careers in manufacturing. And, and the City of Citrus Heights appreciates all of our manufacturers and commends them for their commitment to the betterment of the City of Citrus Heights. Now, therefore be resolved, the City of Council, the City of Citrus Heights does hereby designate October 2022 as Manufacturing Awareness and Appreciation Months. And we have set in her hand, the mayor, Porsha Middleton, this day, September 22nd, oh, sorry, the seal, the 22nd day of September 2022. There we go.
There you go. And you're welcome to make some comments.
Thank you so much, Mayor Middleton, Vice Mayor Schaefer, the entire Council of Citrus Heights, and citizens of Citrus Heights. I want to thank you for making that proclamation and recognizing manufacturing. I'm here representing manufacturers from across the Sacramento region. As Vice Mayor Schaefer mentioned, I also work as the Director of Quality Management at Siemens Mobility Inc., Rolling Stock, where we build high-tech rail-bound passenger vehicles, including the new ones for SACRT, and the Capitol Corridor, and the California Zephyr. Business is booming, and we have over 2,400 men and women working at our plant now. Truth be told, we're not in Citrus Heights, but we are in Citrus Heights. We have over 40 employees, colleagues of our company, that make Citrus Heights their home. These are good-paying jobs, dynamic careers, and have excellent futures where those folks have been able to raise families in Citrus Heights. We've got manufacturers across this region that thank you for your proclamation today. Thank you.
I'd just like to say that RT has a great relationship. I've been to your plant a number of times, just saw the frames of the new low-floor light rail vehicles, and it's just so impressive. You're building locomotives, rail cars, light rail vehicles, and the technology is just amazing. I understand, is there still a huge need for welders?
Oh, yes. American River College, not too far from you, has a special program training welders, and we have over 320 men and women welding on our, at our plant each and every day.
I saw that, and some virtual welding training as well.
That's exactly right. We can test young men and women with a virtual reality. It looks like a video game, but it actually really tests welding skills. And that's a lot of the high-tech that we have. We have a robot that is the length of a football field and two and a half stories tall that is welding these sidewalls. It's absolutely incredible. And just today, we had students from Hyrum Johnson High School visiting our plant, touching those new Sacramento rail cars, and meeting the people that are making them.
Awesome, thank you.
I thank you for your continued work. My husband actually worked for many years at Siemens out on, at Mather, and all the projects you mentioned, all the things he worked and did all the design work for all those, what are those things called? Containers or whatever?
That's right.
Yeah. More, more about trains than I ever wanted in my lifetime, appreciative of the work.
Thank you so much.
Let's come down and take a picture.
Oh, sure.
Right here.
Oh, this is...
I'm trying to evaluate the glare.
So the next items are consent calendar, items five, six, seven, and eight.
With approval?
Motion by Daniels.
Second.
Second by Miller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item?
Next item is public hearing, item number nine. The subject is proposed Sunrise Marketplace zoning overlay. The recommendation is to introduce for a first reading, read by title only, and waive the full reading of an ordinance, adding section 106, 28050 of chapter 106 of the Citrus Heights Municipal Code, and amending the zoning map to include the Sunrise Marketplace overlay zone.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Casey Kempinare, Community Development Director alongside Allison Bermudas, Senior Planner. Wanted to bring this item to you tonight as a policy discussion. There's a fairly robust presentation, so please feel free to interrupt us with any questions you might have as we go through it. Want to make sure we're, we're recognizing the complexity and importance of it. So with that, I'll turn it over to Allison.
Good evening, Council. As mentioned, I'm Allison Bermudas with the Planning Division. All right, tonight's, just go briefly what we're going to cover tonight. We're going to talk about the proposal, what we're actually proposing. It is an overlay zone, so we'll refresh our memories of what an overlay zone is. We'll talk about the specific changes this overlay is proposing, what properties are in the overlay zone, and what the overlay zone, why it's beneficial for our community. We'll go through our public outreach efforts. We'll have our discussion, public comment, and then take action. First, what is proposed, as mentioned, we're proposing an overlay zone. We're calling it the Sunrise Marketplace Overlay Zone. This will be a new section in the zoning code that will, that will define the specifics of this zone. And then the other action is to actually amend our zoning map to add the boundary of this overlaying to our, overlay zone to our map. So to refresh ourselves of what overlay zone is, as you know, there's different zoning. So we have a general plan zoning, which is our base zoning, kind of our broadband zoning designations that cover the parcels in the city. There include areas that are designated as commercial, areas designated as residential. And then to further refine those land uses is our zoning map, which goes parcel by parcel and gets into more specifics of what type of residential zone is allowed, what type of commercial zone is allowed. So if you have an area that has a land use in the general plan as commercial, and you go to the zoning map, it'll say what type of commercial is allowed. Is it a shopping center? Is it what we call a business professional zone? So it gets even more specific. The overlay zone is actually additional zoning layer that's placed over that, that's even more refined as to what uses are allowed in those more specific zoning areas. So if you take a shopping center zone, we have a land use table that says what land uses are allowed in the shopping center zone. That overlay zone will then further refine, yes, those uses are allowed, but then there may be some different tweaks to that or modifications even more specific. So it's really an additional layer over the existing zoning. So it does not change the underlying zoning. If it's zone shopping center now and has overlay on it, it's still zone shopping center. It just has a little bit more refined land use availability. We do have one other overlay zone in the city. Remember the corridor overlay? It does go down the north end of Sunrise, so we have one other overlay zone in the city. The overlay zone we're speaking of tonight is shown here on the map in the red. Essentially follows the boundaries of the Sunrise Marketplace Business Improvement District. Same boundary lines, except if you notice the big Sunrise Mall is not included within this overlay zone, as it is, has its own specific plan that's even more detailed as far as allowed uses. So that was left out of this overlay zone. Other than that, it does follow the boundaries that currently exist of the Marketplace Improvement District. And if you look at those properties in there, you'll notice there's three different zoning designations, the BP in the turquoise, the limited commercial in the blue, and the shopping center zone in pink. So the area does encompass three different land uses. The BP zone, the turquoise ones are office-type uses. There is no impact or no change proposed for any of those parcels that are currently zoned BP. The amendment will modify the allowed uses on the parcels that are zoned SC or the shopping center, which are the large ones in pink, and the properties that are zoned LC or limited commercial. Those are the two specific zoning designations that are being modified with this overlay. The specific changes for the overlay will currently allow all the same uses that exist today in our land use tables, except it is modifying and prohibiting future new uses related to service stations or gas stations, vehicle services major, which are your towing and collision repair type services, vehicle services minor, which are car washes, self-attended type car washes, brake replacement centers, minor tune-up locations. So vehicle services, as you see, is a major component for, like gas stations and repair, are the big categories that are being removed from the allowable uses within that zone in that map that I showed you. In addition, storage, mini storages, we might call them, is being eliminated from an allowed use within that zone. And also ambulance taxi type services or dispatch centers related to that are also being removed from the allowed uses within that zone. We did not want to forget that, as you know, some of those businesses currently exist in that overlay. They've been thriving businesses there for a long time. This overlay will not impact those existing businesses. They, the ordinance does have provisions where they can remain in operation, as they are today, for imperperity. Even they could sell, they can change ownership with, with no impacts. Also, they could also expand their uses that they do, maybe enlarge their building. The ordinance was very specific on working with those businesses and to allow them to continue to thrive. It's what we're doing is eliminating future and new, new businesses related to those services in that area, but existing ones are, could remain.
Quick question?
Yes.
Does that mean an existing gas station could or could not add a car wash?
It could not add a car wash because that would be a prohibited use, but it could expand its gas station services.
Pumps and stuff, okay.
Doesn't the 76 station have a car wash there?
Yeah, there's a lot existing. I was just talking about the ones that don't.
Okay.
So why, why are we doing this? How did we get here? Earlier this spring, we saw a number of new inquiries that were different than we'd historically seen in the, in the marketplace. As you all know, the marketplace is kind of the living room for the city. It's where entertainment, restaurant, shopping is. We do have some automotive uses, as noted, but they're generally located on the periphery or on the corners, not really mid-block. We started to see some interest in a car wash and a gas station mid-block, which is a different from, from what we've seen in the past, and kind of raised a little red flags, given what we've had heard as part of the Sunrise Tomorrow, specific plan development, and what the community's feedback had been through that process. So we said, hey, let's, let's take a break on this and see, see where we're at. So that's kind of how we got started. And also recognizing, you know, as a built-out city, we have very limited land available for real estate for the uses that our community is asking for. So, you know, our opportunities are all redevelopment, which are a little bit more challenging. So they're already challenging, and then when you start bringing in uses that have their own generation of non-desirable outcomes, such as traffic, or noise, or odors, it makes it that much harder for us to work with people to redevelop their properties. Also, one of the lessons we learned as part of the Sunrise Tomorrow specific plan was that two out of every three trips going down Sunrise or Greenback are not stopping or starting in the city. So a lot of the uses that we were seeing proposed are really catering to those cut-through traffic and not necessarily to community members. So those are uses that are, you know, possibly traveling between work in Roseville or in Holman Ranch or vice versa. So really, we know that there's a lot of traffic on those roads. And as you can see on the chart on the bottom, we know their income groups are high, that they have the ability to have disposable income. We just need to give them a reason to stop and spend some more time here in the city and spend their money in Citrus Heights instead of just using us as a convenience to, on their way to and from work. And last but not least, I touched on, and I'll go in a little bit more detail, we really want to make sure that we are limiting the impacts of certain land uses. We don't want to paint ourselves into a corner for what the areas that we do have for redevelopment because it's already hard enough as it is. So, next slide, please. So some of the specific challenges that go along with some of these uses are, the first one noted on there, I like to call this like the vibe. So, you know, how you, how it feels coming into Citrus Heights when you see the Sunrise Marketplace right now, it's like, oh, this is a cool place to hang out. There's restaurants or shops. I think if you change those uses, you start to have a different vibe to the, to Citrus Heights that may not be so inviting for people. Noise. So depending on the use, there's noise generated, it could be speakers, it could be vacuums, equipment, blowers, auto repair, you'd have impacts and air compressors and grinders and all that stuff that make a lot of noise. So then if you have a sensitive use that wants to go in next to that, you have some challenges from a sequoia and livability perspective, dealing with those noise. So it's, it kind of limits your sandbox that you get to play in. Same thing with air quality, with gas stations in particular, you know, there's guidance from the state that you shouldn't have any sensitive uses within 300 feet of a gas station, so that a residential, a school, those types of uses require a buffer. So you're wiping out a huge swath of opportunity that could otherwise be redeveloped by one of the uses that we're trying to attract. Loitering, some of these uses lend themselves to loitering, you know, a gas station, someone might grab a soda and hang out in the parking lot, or there could be folks going through the trash enclosure, that they kind of lend themselves more towards the recurrence of loitering occurring. Security and fencing, some of these uses, for example, me, storage are meant to keep your goods safe, and they do that by creating a fortress of some sort with fencing and walls, and it doesn't really scream, come here, stop and hang out. It just, it doesn't look very appealing. Transit impacts, we all know that transit depends on users, and if you don't have businesses that attract users or are higher-density clusters of employment and, and residential transit, transit has a hard time with that. And then last but not least, fiscal impacts, we know that some of these uses, they don't generate sales tax. They may generate property tax that we're slated to get, but oftentimes, that's not enough to offset the cost to serve them. that's not enough to offset the cost to serve them. So it's important to, with our limited land and resource that we have available, that we're thinking about it in a long-term fiscal health for the city. So in this picture on the top left is an auto repair, and that gets to change how it would feel if you imagined a Marie Callender's all of a sudden becoming an auto repair. It would change how that corridor feels. Same thing with Arco on the right. You can see that's on a corner, and that's more typical where you see a gas station, but start putting that, you know, these two uses side by side on our busiest corridor, it's really starts to change how that area feels and the impact it could have on the community. The bottom left is a mini-storage, you can see the, what I call the fortress look. It looks very uninviting and doesn't really call people in to come hang out and spend money. And similarly with a car wash, it's all closed up there, you know, it doesn't really seem that appealing for folks to come hang out. So what is the benefit of this? There's a lot of benefit, I think, to this proposal. I think number one is the community vision. We did a lot of outreach with Sunrise Tomorrow specific plan, and then as this overlay went forward, went to the neighborhood associations. And the common denominator was that people wanted to have a cool place to hang out, and they wanted uses that were a place where people could gather again. And the uses that we're prohibiting aren't conducive to those types of gatherings. We know Sunrise Tomorrow, we anticipate the success of that will lead to spill over to nearby properties. Folks want to be near Sunrise Mall if they can't be on Sunrise Mall site, so there really is importance to preserve land for that. We touched on the long-term impacts of land uses, you know, most of the gas stations on Sunrise or Greenback have been there for a very long time, and they're not going anywhere anytime soon. So it's, you know, those are long-term challenges that if these uses go in, there are going to be long-term challenges that make it that much harder to, for us and our economic development team to really see turnover on some of those parcels. And then lastly, protecting our key sites, you know, there's some very prominent sites here that are very important, and we want to make sure those are sites that are inviting to folks that are driving by. Equity and vitality, of course, is important. We don't want to say no to everyone. We want to make sure that we are bringing opportunities that are supportive of the community's vision. You know, there's a bunch of uses listed there. We're, you know, the land use table probably has 50 or so uses that are allowed in the SMP. We're limiting about five of those. But there are a lot of uses that we are seeing trends to move towards things like schools, childcare, medical office, housing, retail, and mixed use are becoming more and more apparent and desirable in the community. Our economic development team led by Megan Huber, you know, she has her pulse on what's going on with the commercial market and she monitors that closely, and she has her good relationships with our ownership groups and the folks out there looking to find locations. So she's always trying to match property owners to those folks. But one of the things I think will be really helpful for us to help these businesses and property owners that are impacted by this is, one of the council's strategic objectives is to launch a program that would be ARPA-funded to help do business attraction and retention. So that would be a tool that we have that, say, a brewery wanted to come into a particular site, and they had some significant startup costs or connections to smud that were expensive that we could help with that grant process to help bring them in and create a series of jobs and industry that the community is clamoring for. So we did a lot of outreach as part of this. We had, started with a dedicated webpage that had a lot of FAQs. We did one-on-one outreach to various property owners and groups. I went around to all the neighborhood associations that are kind of adjacent to Sunrise Marketplace, Birdcage Heights or Chayson and Sunrise Ranch, those, and asked, just had a dialogue with them and said, you know, this is what we're considering. Are we hitting the mark? Are there things you want to see there? What would you not want to see there? And overwhelmingly, all these eight groups were very supportive of the overlay because they thought it led to a more likely outcome of achieving the vision that they're hoping to see in the marketplace. Presented to the Sunrise Marketplace Board and the Chamber Board, we mailed meeting notices and published in the newspaper to everyone within 300 feet of the overlay. There's about 120 parcels that are affected by the overlay. We've only heard from about two owners that are concerned with the impacts of the overlay. We also had in your packet, this list didn't get updated, but there's a handful of emails and letters in the packet that came that had folks that were supportive of the approach. Last month, we had the Planning Commission meeting. There were several speakers. Most of them were very supportive of the vision for the marketplace. Many had concerns with the perception of those uses, so the car washes and gas stations in particular, where they were concerned what those would do to that area. One property owner did voice concern related to the impacts of a potential lease he had with a car wash at the China Buffet site. Ultimately, the Planning Commission heard the testimony that was provided and recommended unanimously that the council would approve the overlay. Then last but not least, SEQA review, the project is exempt from SEQA under the common sense exemption, and then minor alterations and land use limitations because there's no cumulatively considerable impacts. And with that, the motion recommended is on screen. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from council members?
Not yet.
None yet? Okay, well, this is a public hearing, and I'll open the public hearing. I have several speaker sheets, and I'll call you up. First individual, Kathy Morris.
Mayor, council members. Several weeks ago, excuse me, as Casey mentioned, he did come to our group and ask our group for input. I'm with Chayson, which is Area 7, 8, and 9. We did participate with our association, with our group. We sent out quite a bit of mailing, we sent out emails and asked for people, what do you want to see? What do you want to happen in Citrus Heights development? What do you want and what do you not want? We got a lot of response. I was very pleased with the response, and it was absolutely down the line. It's part of your packet, so you could have read it. The issue is, people want to stay in Citrus Heights. They want to be able to stay, shop, and spend their money here, and I think that's great. So they want the kinds of things that they can do, restaurants, entertainment venues, and shopping venues. As a couple of people said, I have nothing against a car wash, but we have enough. Thank you very much. Have nothing against gas stations, but we have enough. Thank you. So the issue was, spend our money here, give us things to do, dining, restaurants, entertainment venues. It was pretty consistent. The other thing that was consistent was, the neighbors, the residents of Citrus Heights of our area said, thank you for asking. We like being here, we want to stay here, we want to spend our money here, thank you for asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Trevor Knight.
Hello, council members, mayor. My name is Trevor Knight. I'm owner-operator of Waterfly Car Wash. My father and I started our, we bought our two businesses in Sacramento about five years ago. One location's on Sunrise Boulevard, right in Fair Oaks, as you guys might have seen. It was in the middle of remodel for a while, and we just finished that about three and a half years ago. We're here to address the concerns over car wash. Car washes aren't like other automotive uses. We're environmentally friendly. You know, a typical car wash in the driveway uses about 100 gallons of water. But because of our recycling of the water we use, we use about 35, 30 to 35 gallons of fresh water. So also, we don't dump any wastewater in the drains. We put it through a process of refining the water, and then we have a waste company come and remove it. So there's no odors, there's no waste, there's no pollution. So it's a very clean, clean thing. There's low levels of noise as well. In fact, our Fair Oaks location, Shangri-La is a pretty nice, high-end restaurant, which is a great place to hang out, which I know that's an issue that they share concerns with. But, you know, they have a bocce ball court out there, they have a cornhole courts, they have all that stuff, and they're right next door to us, and we have a great relationship with them. We do cross-promoting with them, we've given away Shangri-La gift cards, and they love working with us. And we try to do that. We work with the community to build kind of relationships with other businesses. My manager has a brother who is handicapped, and so he works with Maristam, which works with adults with autism to give them jobs. And we've worked with them, we've hired about three different young adults in our Fair Oaks location. So we really try to get connected with the community. I think there's a misconception as well that we only attract commuter traffic. Well, you know, if you talk to any expert in the industry, all of our models we use to determine what's a good location is, we base it on a three-mile radius of population. So really, our customers are not commuters. In fact, that's probably the worst type of traffic to have. About 62% of our volume are from club members, and those club members live within a three-to-five mile radius. We have a couple of Citrus Heights customers actually wrote a letter of recommendation. My site manager, one of our managers lives in Citrus Heights, and he also wrote a letter. He'd love to be able to walk to work. Also, my other manager owns a business in Citrus Heights. He also sells used cars. He has an office in Citrus Heights. So we're already pretty well, you know, we're close enough where we do draw a lot of people from there. Car wash customers make a total of 3.2 stops around a car wash visit. So we love being near groceries, restaurants, stores, big-box stores, laundry. There's a lot of connection between other businesses. In fact, oh, my time is up. Did I talk too much? Well, thank you. Thank you for listening to me. And I would just hope that if an overlay is passed, maybe consider maybe allowing a car wash use. But thank you. Should have been watching the timer, yes.
Thank you for your comment. Next up, we'll have Phil Jarrett.
Thank you, mayor, vice mayor, council members. My name's Philip Jarrett. I own the property at 5623 Sunrise Boulevard, the former China Buffet. The first thing I just really want to talk about, and I'll really watch the clock as well, is that I really think the conclusion on the staff report is wrong. The proposed zoning amendment is not consistent with the general plan. It limits the ability to adapt to changing trends now and in the future. Not allowing us to build a car wash, keeping the building vacant, allowing a haven for the homeless. It's detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, convenience, and welfare of the city. It's dangerous of my property. I'm embarrassed of my property. When I met with the city in May, they told me that car washes were an allowable use. They did. I received a lease with Waterfly in July, and after getting the signed, executed lease, I found out that the city was proposing an overlay to prevent me from building what I believe was lawfully able to build, what I was lawfully able to build. The overlay was created because of the car wash project. There was no warning that this was coming until after we received the lease, and if there was, I might not have worked so diligently with car wash companies to try to find the best one to lease my property. After reading the staff report, I realized that what City of Citrus Heights wants is restaurants and shopping and hotels and farmers' markets, and I think there's going to be a lot of that built at the mall project. There's 100 acres there that is probably going to be the best area. I mean, I just imagine Santana Row there. I imagine it's going to be a great community partner. Every restaurant on Restaurant Row, what I consider Restaurant Row, has gone out of business at one point or another. They may have come back and repurposed the building. I went and took pictures tonight at 5:30 at Boston Markets, had zero people in their parking lot. Tapatio's parking lot was full, probably over 100 cars. They're busy, Boston Pizza's not. I mean, restaurants are tough. Restaurants are tough. They're a risky business. If you pass the overlay as it is, I'm afraid the homeless issue's going to get worse on my property. I've spent the last four years cleaning up and taking care of that, and I believe the City of Citrus Heights can use another car wash. There's 75,000 vehicles in the area. With that, Citrus Heights can support 14 car washes, like the car wash that Waterfly's going to build, the latest, greatest car wash that the City of Citrus Heights deserves. And what I'm asking you for is, if you pass the overlay, that you remove membership-based car washes from the list of banned businesses. Thank you.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
I just want to take a moment to publicly apologize to you. You reached out to me, and I did not find a way to make the time to meet with you. And you're important, and you're important to Citrus Heights, and I just want to publicly apologize for not making that happen.
Thank you for that. And I felt like your email was, and I know you read my emails, and I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next individual, Al Fox.
Good evening, Mayor Milton and council. I went through this project just completely before I went to the Planning Commission, where this was discussed completely through. And a couple of things that I came out with is, number one, being on the Planning Commission for eight and a half years, I saw what the community looked like. I saw what they were looking for, as we did creeks and trails, as we did the medical office building, as we did some of those major projects that we went through as a city. And I understand what, how they see our postage stamp-sized community in the overall view of Sacramento County. We are the only thing in the north end of Sacramento County, and we should be the destination that people want to go to. With that in mind, you know, the community outreach and support that I believe the city has undergone has been very well-done and brings excellent point to what you're considering tonight. Because we can, we have passed through traffic at such a high majority, that's not going to be a destination. What we need to plan our city for in our growth is destinations for folks who come here. Anybody who has ever had a booth or ever spent time talking to visitors at events at Rush Park like we have just gone through understands that a whole lot of people come there, from Antelope, from Carmichael, from Fair Oaks, from Orangeville. They come to our events. If we're going to look at things, let's look at doing it as a destination point. I think the overlay does that for us. I have nothing against the car wash. I believe those are important businesses, but in the right place and at the right time. And I don't believe this is the right place at this particular time for the car wash consideration, but I do believe the overlay is the right thing for us to do. It is the right location because it follows with what we're already trying to develop as an economic business center for our community and an entertainment center. And I think if we do that, we build the destination part of our city that we once had, when it was just Sunrise Mall and a few good restaurants, but people came out here because it was a place to go. And I think we can repeat that again with smart planning, and I believe that smart planning starts here. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last comment is from Jody Ash.
Good evening, mayor, council members, and Ms. Bermudez and Mr. Kempinar. I want to thank you guys for your thoughtful work. My name is Jody Ash. I'm here on behalf of the Birdcage Heights neighborhood, which is just what we're talking about there. In August, we became aware that there was a possibility of a gas station or a car wash or that kind of a business contemplated for that site, which was Marie Callender's and the China Buffet site. Anybody here who's uninitiated, that's the west side of Sunrise, between Madison and Greenback. When it came to our tangent, we listened carefully because this is ground zero for everybody in our group. This is where we live, where we play. We shop, everything that we do, most of us goes on right there. The consensus of the group to the last member that we spoke with is that we have more than enough of this kind of business in our neighborhood. Nothing bad, but it's just, it's enough. We do not believe that it would be promote an engaging neighborhood. It is likely that this kind of business, we think, would draw more traffic, more congestion, more smog, possibly more traffic accidents, and generally impact the neighborhood in not a positive way. In addition to the clutter and the chaos, it's possibly toxic. That didn't sound real good either. It would be appreciated if this is not the accepted business in this area. We are hopeful that in addition to the plan, the long-range plan for the Sunrise Mall, that we can create an adjacent, attractive, welcoming, walkable, friendly corridor where community spirit is not only possible but encouraged. Folks can gather, dine, and just be neighbors. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I agree. Is, I'm assuming that was the last speaker card?
That was the last speaker card.
I was just going to ask if there were any public comments on Zoom, if you use the raise hand function to indicate your desire to speak. I do see one raised hand, so I'll go ahead and... So that is Susan. So you can now unmute yourself to speak.
All right. Thank you. My name is Susan Baker. I'm with El Tapatio, Mexican restaurant, and we absolutely want to see the Sunrise overlay of the marketplace happen. There's a lot of reasons for it. Number one, we feel that the Sunrise Marketplace can be a fabulous destination area. Number one, we feel that the Sunrise marketplace can be a fabulous destination area. We believe that because as a restaurant, we have become a destination restaurant. We have consumers that come from one to two hours away and people that come from out-of-state, Southern California, fly in. And when they're in the Sacramento area, they specifically come to El Tapatio, Mexican restaurant. They would love to be able to see venues, other things to do while they're in our area because they're already there. They're a captive audience for us as a community to continue to grow and have a great tax base. We employ 87, no, 97 employees right now, and we're growing. The restaurant industry as a whole is in a great growth spurt, contrary to a lot of what people are saying. The National Restaurant Association just had a big conference about a week and a half ago, and the discussion centered around how customer counts are up overall to prior COVID. The volumes in restaurants that are providing a great experience are doing exceptionally well. Our sales are up 12% to 14% this year. We are on record for a record year, and we see that continuing. Many of our guests, when they come to the restaurant, talk about how when they come, they hit Lowe's, they go to Target, they hit other businesses in the area. They come for doctor's appointments, et cetera. And the more that we have to draw people, the better it will be. I know Sunrise Mall is never going to be the same as it was. I grew up when Sunrise Mall was first built, and it didn't even open the first year because they couldn't get employees. So I've been around for a long time, and I want to see us do that vibrant area again. And I think Citrus Heights has a great opportunity to do that. From our perspective, putting a car washing next door to us would just not work. Number one, we have a reciprocal parking agreement, which means that nothing can be done in the parking lot, and none of their, you know, washing the cars, you know, doing the vacuuming, wiping them down, all of that, because those parking spaces are to be kept for parking only. That was an overlay put in by the county when those four parcels were built. I do think there's room for more restaurants in our area because we have customers that would love to go to other restaurants. Yes, we might lose them tonight, but they're already coming a lot, and our sales continue to grow. The more vibrant restaurants, retail, stores, et cetera, the better everybody does. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment before I close the public hearing? Yes, please come up, state your name, please. And then, after you're done, fill out a speaker card, right here.
Hi, council. My wife and I live in Edgewood. Next door, it's two minutes walking from the closed-down Sears, vacant Sears. I just want to say, I look at the Galleria in Roseville. It's beautiful, that area, all the shopping and everything. And I'd rather have it look like that than something on the foreign road or something. Because I used to live in the south area. We've only been here three years. And that area out there is really nice, upscale, and so that's all I want to say.
What's your name again?
I'm sorry, Zachary Stagner. My wife, Xinhua Chen, Stagner.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, seeing no further public comment, I'm going to close the public hearing. And before I take it off to council here, Casey, I did just want to kind of clarify something that the owner of the China Buffet said about his interactions and whatnot. If you could clarify that for me?
Sure, yeah. A little bit of timeline. Mr. Jarrett reached out in February asking about potential uses, including a drive-through restaurant and/or a car wash. About that same time, we were having that conversation with the council about car wash, or excuse me, drive-throughs in general. But we raised concerns with Mr. Jarrett and said, you know, these uses, we have some concerns with them based on compatibility. Later on, as soon as we had the overlay concept in place, my first call was to Kathleen and Carpenter at Sunrise Marketplace, and she reached out to Mr. Jarrett directly and let him know. And two days later, we had a meeting with Quick Quack, who was interested in purchasing the site, and we explained to them what the intent of the overlay was. And they backed out. And then sometime thereafter, we did get, Mr. Jarrett called with this Waterfly thing, and we said, well, we're going through overlay. This is what it means.
Okay, thank you for that background.
Question first.
Go ahead, Steve.
Before we go to comment. This issue about the parking, this is the first I've heard of it. I know, well, I know we have similar things at the mall where there's restrictions and all the property owners have to agree to it. So I wasn't aware there's a covenant and restriction on these properties. I would imagine four parcels. Do you know anything about that?
I have not seen the agreement myself, but I have heard that from different property owners that there is some sort of REA sort of document, but I have not seen it myself.
Yeah, knowing that would really help a lot.
I think, and what we've been told with, as we've worked with developers on the mall and other sites, is that that's a common practice that property owners are able to negotiate and work through. But each one of them is unique.
Yeah.
Well, council member, you know, a lot of, there could be agreements that are not on title. So they very well may be private agreements that we're not aware of. So that's, we have not seen it, but that's a potential as well.
Yeah, because I know the mall had those, and all the major property owners had to approve any kind of development in the parking field. So anything outside the building footprint, that's, yeah. Be helpful, no, but I think we can still make a decision tonight.
Okay, Mr. Daniels, do you have anything?
No questions yet.
Okay. Jeanne? Comments? Mr. Daniels, we'll start with you.
Well, gee, thanks.
You're welcome.
You know, it's huge for me, huge, for me to put a restriction or take the ability away from a property owner to do anything with their property that they want to do within legal bounds. And so making a decision to do such a thing weighs really heavy on my heart. And I'm still not absolutely sure which way I'm going to go with this. We're going to vote in a minute, but I'm still not absolutely sure. Just, it's something that is strong in my heart because this is America. You should be able to do with your property what you want to do with it. The government shouldn't be able to tell you what you can do with your property, again, as long as you stay within legal boundaries. And so it's a difficult one for me. I have concerns, even though some timelines have been discussed about who did what this, you know, when this notification came in. But the bottom line is, the bottom line is that there's no overlay yet. And the property owner went out and tried to do something, at least, with this property that's been sitting empty for way too many years and at the detriment of just not only the property owner, but the city. You know, it's not good when properties sit empty. And he did something, and I'm happy he did something. And it's just unfortunate that we are here today now making this decision after the fact, is the way I'll put it, even though, again, it's not like he handed us an agreement and we went out and said, okay, let's change this kind of a thing. But I feel like this is something that we probably should have thought of a little earlier. If this does go through today, the thing I would want to ask for is that, as a city, we're going to, and I guess I should try to choose my words carefully, but we're going to be a financial detriment to this property owner if he isn't allowed to develop his property in this way because, again, it's not going to get developed right now, and it's going to be who knows when, when it might get developed. And so it's going to be money out of his pocket. And I hope that if we do this and we prevent him from being able to run this or create this car wash or sell whatever, that we come back at some point or during that process when there is a use found and do things like waive fees and stuff like that. We need to do everything we can and maybe even work with the property owner if this doesn't, if the overlay goes through, and work with the property owner to do everything we can, everything we can to find a new use for this building and property. And again, it just weighs so heavy on my heart to tell a property owner that they can't do something with their property when it's legal for them to do that thing. So again, I'm still not made up, and I'm going to listen to my fellow council members and what they have to say. But we just can't take this lightly when we're doing this to somebody who is the legal owner. That being said, that this is, hopefully, again, once was and hopefully comes back to the premier area for, excuse me, Citrus Heights. And, you know, I want to see this mall property developed, and I want to see that hotel that we're talking about, and I want to see that big entertainment center, and I want to see, you know, Neil Diamond on that stage singing to 2,500 people. And so obviously, I want to see things that go with that. I want to see nice restaurants. I want to see, you know, different types of restaurants. I want to see a nice Italian restaurant up there and that kind of thing. And so the bottom line is, the bottom line is, the car wash doesn't fit. And I think that's kind of a given. But I want to see this turn into, once again, Citrus Heights premier area of entertainment, food, and stuff like that. And the bottom line is, the car wash doesn't fit. So that's in my heart, too. I'm giving that a lot of consideration, too. So, ready to look, you shouldn't have let me go first, but I'm anxious to hear my fellow council members and what they have to say.
Thank you, Brett. Steve?
Well, if it's any consolation, I'm struggling with the same exact thing. I met with Mr. Jarrett, the property owner of the Chinese buffet, or the former, we should say. And we both discussed our reservations with the overlay and the impact it would have on our existing distressed properties. We also discussed, he has marketed for a restaurant use, but since the building's been damaged by transient and drug users, he's having a difficult time attracting a restaurant tenant because it would need a complete teardown rather than just a simple TI. And I struggle with telling a property owner exactly what Brett said, that they would no longer be able to do the things with their property that they used to be able to do, and I was leaning against this overlay. Then I discussed this with Casey and our city manager, Ash, and read the comments from our planning commission, neighborhood groups, residents, adjacent establishments, and the testimony we heard tonight. I understand the desire and need to keep existing vacant businesses as a restaurant, brew house, or maybe an entertainment venue. I could support this overlay proposal if our council would commit to an economic grant or loan program, much like the relief we gave our restaurants because of COVID. We lost a lot of restaurants, and if the property owner is also suffering from the effects of COVID shutdowns, we should help with some of the, in some form of financial incentive from our rescue funds we have to bring, so we can bring in the uses that we would like to see. We discussed the car wash, and I don't have an issue with Waterfly or car washes. It's a much more efficient way to wash your car than on your front lawn. And I just don't see it being surrounded by three restaurants. It just doesn't seem compatible. So I think we're along the same lines so far. So what I'm really concerned about is the buildings that are on some of these vacant properties. There aren't many, but the old Bobby McGee's and Chinese buffet is a good example of a public safety issue. And in my mind, tear downs of our vacant properties in the proposed overlay zone would solve a lot of the safety issues and blight that we're seeing right now and make each property more attractive for the development we want to see in the marketplace. So while I was once leaning towards voting no on the overlay, I will support this item if we either end the motion for this item or talk about it later at the end of the agenda about adding an agenda item to talk about an economic development grant or loan program. And demolition assistance should be addressed as soon as possible. So that's my thoughts.
Vice Mayor?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'm kind of dumbfounded that we are, kind of, all three of us, one, two, three, kind of on the same page. And I, one of the things that I, I look at this, and I did meet with Mr. Jarrett, and it was a very pleasant conversation. He's a very pleasant gentleman. And what I certainly struggle with, the whole idea of telling somebody that they can't do something with their property. That is really a huge struggle. But at the same time, if I said, all right, we're going to give him a variance on his property, is that to the detriment of the other properties that are on the nearby parcels? Because it certainly changes the direction of where that development goes. So if we said, okay, we're going to put a, we're going to allow a car wash here, what's to say that, okay, well, then we're going to put a gas station where Marie Callender's is? Or we're going to, it just, it sort of goes down the wrong, in my opinion, goes down the wrong path. I completely support council members Miller's suggestion that we offer a grant program to assist these distressed properties and help them in any way that we can. But at this point in time, listening to our taxpayers and residents and business owners, I really, I will be supporting this overlay, the way it is.
Ms. Bruins?
Thank you. Well, I'm not going to repeat everything that's been said so far. I am very much in general agreement with it. I did have a very nice and lengthy phone conversation with Mr. Jarrett, and I know that he wants to do what's best for his family, and I understand that. I think we have to weigh the interests of the community and the long-term effects versus, as well as the short-term solutions on this. So I am in favor of the overlay, as staff has recommended it. Thank you.
Benefit of being mayor is I get to go last and say ditto. But on a serious note, we have to, as council, we have to leverage and understand what the community wants and what's been said and what they desire versus what a property owner wants and needs to have done with this property. I know that we have had lengthy discussions, and will continue to have more discussions about further grant funding programs around rebuilding that corridor. And so I know that staff is committed to that. Our city manager is part of his, I'm going to get this wrong, focused work plan? Oh, got it right? Yes. All right, so we know that that's on the horizon, and I know that's a small consolation in respect to where we are right now. So with that, we have a motion in front of us.
Mayor, could I ask Mr. Jones a question?
Okay.
Would it be appropriate, since it really was an agenda this way, to do a separate agenda item in our next meeting on the whole economic?
Correct. I think because it was an agenda, I think that'd be a Brown Act issue to add that to the motion. Obviously, at the end of the meeting, under future agenda items, if that's something you want to bring back to the council, you certainly could. But in your comments, you've, I think you've given direction to staff that we're taking in relative to that, that we're all going to factor into.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion in front of us. What is the pleasure of the council?
Well, I will move that we introduce for the first reading and read only by title and waive the full reading of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Citrus Heights to add section 106.28.050 of chapter 106 of the City of Citrus Heights Municipal Code, zoning code section, and amend the zoning map to include the Sunrise Marketplace overlay zone.
We have a motion by Bruins?
Second.
Second by Miller. Do I need a roll call for this?
I would suggest, you don't have to because everybody's here, but I think you should.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Miller?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Aye.
And Mayor Middleton?
Aye. Motion passes. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearing, item number 10. The subject is second reading ordinance amending various sections of chapter 18 of the Citrus Heights Municipal Code relating to buildings and building regulations. The recommendation is to approve an ordinance amending chapter 18 of the Municipal Code relating to buildings and building regulations and adopting by reference the 2022 California Administrative Code, Building Code, Residential Code, Electrical Code, Mechanical Code, Plumbing Code, Green Building Standards Code, Energy Code, and existing building code.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Greg Anderson, chief building official. On October 13th, the council introduced and read by title only an ordinance amending sections 38 of the Citrus Heights Municipal Code, including adopting the 2022 California Code of Regulations. In addition with that was specified appendices along with local amendments. City council did not... Uh, city council did not make any amendments to the proposed ordinance at the time of the first reading. And with that, staff recommends we move for approval. And I could answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. Members from the public are welcome to make comments. No? Okay.
And I do not see any raised hands on Zoom.
Okay. Close said, public hearing. Any comments from the council? Questions? None?
Can we have the motion back on the screen?
You know we need help.
I have it right here.
You have it? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So I move that we approve ordinance 22-010 in accordance with an, an ordinance amending chapter 18 of the Citrus Heights municipal code relating to the building and building regulations and adopting by reference the 2022 California administrative code, California building code, California residential code, California electrical code, California mechanical code, California plumbing code, California green building standards code, and California energy code, and California existing building code.
Second.
I have a motion by Schaefer and second by Daniels.
You can do a voice vote if you'd like.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item is public hearing, item number 11. The subject is review final 2023 action plan and funding recommend, recommendations for the community development block grant program. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the community development block grant 2023 action plan and authorizing the city manager to execute and file all documents required to receive U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Community Development Block Grant Funding. So, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Nicole Piva with the Community Development Department. Uh, tonight's item is to hold a public hearing and consider the funding recommendations for the 2023 action plan. Citrus Heights receives federal community development block grant funding from HUD, and in 2023, we estimate receiving about $600,000. Prior to each program year, uh, the grantee, which is the city, must adopt an action plan that outlines the activities that is planned and the funding allocations. Uh, as council will recall, on October 13th, we held our first public hearing to receive feedback on the draft funding recommendations, and tonight is the last step in the process. We'll hold a second public hearing, um, hear any feedback, and have council consider adoption of the action plan. As presented during the last council meeting, um, these numbers reflect the quality of life committee funding recommendations, um, outlined in the third column. These organizations applied for public service funds, and, um, they provide a variety of services to our Citrus Heights residents. For capital and housing, life committee recommended 90,000 improvements, $270,000 critical. And staff recommends to hold the public hearing and then to adopt the action plan by resolution. I know that was very quick. Um, I'm available to answer any questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Daniels.
Can you go back to the previous slide on the ADA improvements? Does the 390,000 represent the minimum? And ADA improvements?
Yes. For the, we allocate 15 persons, which is the 390 total project.
So, but my question is more specific towards, is it required that we put that much money specifically into ADA compliant pedestrian ramps and stuff like that?
I conferred with Director Cave, and no, that's not. We invest much higher as requirement of the ADA transition plan.
So the, the requirement, the minimum requirement is even higher?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about the curveball question.
Wasn't that part of a settlement on an ADA lawsuit that we had a maintenance of effort every year?
I was just looking at the number, you know, I mean, again, we, we keep seeing these ramps put in, and they, they serve a great purpose, but at the same time, um, we keep, uh, suffering from poor roads, poor sidewalks, other things that are important to, but I just wanted to know.
Any other comment from council?
No, I was just gonna add, um, my comment, having sat on this committee for many, many years. We, um, we are required to, uh, by percentages, only to give so much, um, to the, like, flip it back a page, if you would, to the, uh, public service funding recommendations, as an example, Brett. We would like to give more if we could, but we can't.
Okay.
That's the ceiling.
Okay. Seeing no other comment, this is a public hearing, and I will open said hearing. Any comments from the public?
And I do not see any on Zoom either.
Okay, I will close the hearing. Any further comments, questions from council before we make a motion?
I'll go ahead and move the resolution of the Citrus Heights City Council to approve the community development block grant 2023 action plan and to authorize the city manager or is designated to execute and file all the documents required to receive the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Community Block Grant Funding.
I second.
Motion by Bruins, second by Schaefer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please. Next item. Oh, gosh. Next item, please. There we go.
Next item is public hearing, item number 12. The subject is establishment of the Auburn Boulevard Underground Utility District. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution establishing an underground utility district on Auburn Boulevard between Sylvan Corners and the northern city limits.
Mayor and vice mayor, council members. Hunter Young with General Services. We're returning to you again. Uh, we were here two weeks ago to discuss a, an amendment to the municipal code related to underground utility districts. Uh, as part of the consent calendar this evening, uh, your council did approve, uh, the second reading of that. And so we are now here to discuss the, specifically the Auburn Boulevard corridor itself. Uh, the Auburn Boulevard Underground Utility District would, uh, be on Auburn Boulevard between Sylvan Corners and the northern city limits. Uh, the work includes placing overhead utilities underground, and we are working with our utility providers, uh, on this project, and they are requiring that we take this action in order to protect their future investment and to ensure that future utility companies do not come into the city, uh, within the district itself and place aerial facilities as we see today. Uh, Auburn Boulevard, as you know, has two different phases. Phase one was completed in 2014, so we've actually already undergrounded about half of the corridor. And phase two, then, uh, we're tentatively looking at, uh, construction 24, in early 2024, and that would then complete the undergrounding, uh, process along, uh, Auburn Boulevard. What are the financial impacts? As part of this, we need to modify about 20 different, uh, buildings in terms, not the buildings themselves, but how they receive electrical, uh, service. Currently with overhead power, they have a certain fee that comes from the roof line. We need to modify that and come in from underground. And so this, uh, $330,000 estimated impact relates to those modifications of, of the electrical panels themselves to receive, uh, the new underground service. The municipal code does allow, uh, that res, or property owners would bear those costs. In the case of Auburn Boulevard, the city has elected to, to pay for that through our project funding. So there will not be an impact to the property owners themselves on this. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, that the council may have.
I have one. Go ahead. Uh, I thank you for your presentation. I don't know if this directly relates to our vote tonight, but, um, my question is, when we, um, begin the, the construction of the second and final phase of the Auburn Boulevard specific plan, um, right now where the undergrounding lines, um, end, then they go back up overhead, there's these great big, thick, high-power poles. Will those still stay, or will those all, everything be undergrounded from start to finish?
On, on, as part of phase two, the wood utility poles that you see will be removed. Uh, after we actually underground, uh, smud and the telecommunication companies will then insert or pull in their new cabling. When that is switched over to use the new facilities, then the old facilities get removed, including the wood poles.
I'm not talking about wood poles. I'm talking about the big?
The big steel ones?
The big steel ones that are, that are kind of a, at the end of, because I'd asked the question at the time that we, we did the work, and they said they were required to still be above ground.
Are you referring to the ones that are at Antelope, specifically?
No, I'm very, actually, they're on Auburn Boulevard. Yeah.
There, there's several, there's some overhead utility lines that do come down on, um, on Antelope, and they turn at the intersection of Auburn, and they head north on Auburn for a block right there near Rush Park, and then they head due east. Those will remain as they are today.
They will?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? This is a public hearing. If you have any comments, now's the time. Amy?
And I don't see any on Zoom.
All right. Closing the hearing. Any further comments, questions, or action by the council?
Well, I will move that we adopt this resolution of the city council of the city of Citrus Heights to establish an underground utility district on Auburn Boulevard between Sylvan Corners and the northern city limits.
I second.
I have a motion by Bruins, a second by Schaefer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearing, item number 13. The subject is proposed shopping cart ordinance. The recommendation is to introduce for a first reading, read by title only and waive the full reading of an ordinance, adding article seven to chapter 50 of the Citrus Heights municipal code relating to the regulation of shopping carts.
Madam Mayor, I may go ahead and get us started with this presentation, and I just have a few opening comments. So, good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Schaefer, members of the council. Uh, this item before you tonight is really, um, it's a tool to our overall toolbox. Uh, the mayor mentioned our focus area work plan that, uh, this council adopted by resolution earlier this year. Uh, this item here is specifically one of our six-month strategic objectives that was, uh, part of that overall work plan. And it, we, it's part of the community image that we're trying to, uh, improve, and that's one of the key focus areas that came out of a lot of community outreach and that was important to your city council. Uh, so this here is to address a lot of shopping cart litter that we see throughout the city on our major corridors. It goes into our creeks, our neighborhoods, uh, private property, public property, blocking sidewalks and the like. What's happening right now, the existing system, it's not working, or we wouldn't see that. And so we want to introduce some tools that would allow us to take another approach and see how that tool works. And so that's what we have before you tonight. A lot of other jurisdictions, uh, I'd say probably most jurisdictions, uh, have a shopping cart ordinance. We do not. So we're proposing that tonight as one of our tools that will work in conjunction with other tools that we're working on to improve the community image and specifically address blight. Uh, so our team will provide a presentation on that tonight, but I just wanted to have a, maybe kind of a little broader view of why this is here and what it's a part of.
Thank you, City Manager Feeny. Allison Bermuda's here with the Planning Division, uh, on the shopping cart ordinance, along with my partner here, Regina Cave. And we're gonna go over a few items, uh, to strategic objectives that were just mentioned. We're gonna, uh, talk about the current retrievals, get into a little bit details about that, and our approach on this ordinance, um, how we're approaching, uh, implementing this ordinance, that some of the key points, go through the proposed timeline, go through our outreach and our feedback, and then ask for your action.
Good evening, council. Uh, so for the current retrievals, uh, the city currently has a contract, and we have extended a contract for somewhere of 15 to 20 years, actually, where we have a contracted company who comes in and retrieves shopping carts from our public right-of-way as an attempt to abate a lot of the nuisance and the safety issues that we see related to shopping carts in the public right-of-way, carts that are on our sidewalks, blocking ADA ramps, and often also within traffic areas and within our creeks. So currently, and this number is a little bit low, and I'll explain, but for the city's retrieval services from our public areas, it's about an average of 420 carts a year. Now, this does not reflect, again, the carts that are picked up and pulled out of our creeks, or carts that are picked up by our own internal forces. Typically, when those carts have debris in them, when they have debris in them, the cart retrieval services will not pick them up because they simply do not have the capacity to absorb all that extra garbage from those carts. So if we look at about the last 10 fiscal years of pickup, we're actually at about 900 carts a year that are being picked up. In addition to that, the Sunrise Marketplace, uh, has reported that about 1,176 carts that they have pulled just from within their district. There's both onsite and offsite, but typically immediately adjacent to the public right-of-way. So you're looking at a total of upwards of more about 2,000 carts to 2,500 carts a year. And we currently have 42 retailers within Citrus Heights that have shopping carts in place, and this does not, uh, again, reflect all of the offsite carts, um, that are picked up from private properties.
All right. So our approach to the ordinance was really four phases. We want to talk about prevention. As we know, that's the best, best method to prevent the carts from being stray and, and leaving their home base. Accountability in keeping the carts onsite, a shared impact, um, on how these are having with our businesses, a shared impact between the city and these businesses, and really to minimize the impact, um, on the businesses with the ordinance. So prevention would be through a plan. Uh, we'll talk about our, our shopping cart retrieval plan that we're asking the businesses to prepare. Um, we want to help them protect their assets. The shopping carts are an asset. They're expensive. Uh, they need to be replaced when they're lost, and so we want to help them prevent the loss of that. We want to increase our pedestrian and vehicular safety and ADA accessibility, so they're not strayed on the sidewalks, and really protect our environment by keeping them out of the creeks. Accountability, we want accountability to the retailers that are repeat offenders. Probably all know who some of those are. We deal with, see their carts the most often, uh, so we want some accountability for those retailers that are repeat offenders. The shared impact, we really want the motivation in the retailers to comply, and we'll do that through a number of methods. Uh, we want the business to be able to reclaim their cart, so should we impound a cart or one gets, uh, picked up, we want them to be able to reclaim it. And we, you know, bottom line is, we're trying to reduce the blight. To minimize the impact, you know, we work together between Planning Division and General Services and Police Department on this ordinance, and we developed, came up with ways we think would be the least impacted to the businesses, but give, maximize the benefit. The plan is flexible, where we can work individually with the businesses, and we're not charging, uh, for this approval that they need to get from us on their plan. Some of the key points of the ordinance is that this will apply to all businesses that have carts. So if you have a cart as part of your retail responsibility, um, you have some, you have some responsibility to protect those. Um, includes, you know, being able to identify your carts. We should, we want to know whose cart it is, so should it be found offsite or off-premise, um, it should be identifiable whose cart it is. Signs should be posted, um, for the public to know, um, they are not able or not authorized to remove the carts from the premise. Uh, we want them to be responsible and reclaim their impounded carts within 72 hours. And then we want, we want this communication tool through the shopping cart retrieval plan that we're asking for, which is really our communication tool, what the business is to, for us to know, what is your plan? What are your methods for loss prevention? How are you, uh, getting this information to your employees to bring in a cart when they're walking through the parking lot, or whatever methods it might be? Um, this plan is our communication tool, uh, with those businesses. So a little bit about the sharpen, the shopping cart retrieval plan. Um, it's not gonna apply to businesses that have five or fewer carts, so we'll exempt the smaller businesses that just provide a few carts for the ease of their customers. Um, but if you have six or more carts, then you will be submitting a cart retrieval plan. As I mentioned, it's just really a communication tool, it's a simple application form, uh, tell us how many carts you Tell us how many carts you own. What measures are you employing to keep your carts onsite? Are you having any employee training methods? And bottom line, what are your retrieval methods? Should those carts leave? How are they going to get back to you? The plan is submitted to the city. We review it in a prompt timeline of thirty days, work with the businesses, shall we seek modifications, or we need clarification, and then they would implement the plan. In addition, if you're in a center with other businesses that have carts and you partner up on things, we would allow businesses to work together and submit one plan. And just again, there is no fee for them to file this. It really would be done, just like a business license application, just the completion of a form, and then it would be reviewed by the Planning Division. They would only submit the retrieval plan one time. It's not a yearly renewal or yearly resubmital. It would only need to be re-submitted if, should they modify their business practices or change something, or if they're consistently having issues, we may want to work with them to modify their plan to step up some of the enforcement tools. We do impound carts. Currently, Regina talked about the carts that are found along the sidewalks and in the streets and in the right-of-way. We do pick those up now. This ordinance will expand that, where we can pick up carts that are on private property but are off-site. So, should a certain retailer's cart not, a target cart be found over at Walmart and we're in the area, it could be picked up. Right now, the ordinance and the laws do not allow us to do that. We're only retrieving them from the right-of-way, so this would expand our ability to impound those carts. They'll be brought back here. The business would be contacted, and the business would be expected to pick up that cart within three days. If they do, they're, it's released back to them at no, at no charge. If they take longer than that, they take the four to thirty days to pick it up, they would pay twenty-five dollars per cart to claim it. And then, if carts are not reclaimed in thirty days, they could be immediately disposed of. In addition, carts that aren't meeting the identification requirements, we don't know whose cart it is, then it could be immediately impounded and disposed of. Repeat impoundments would be three times in six months. They would pay an additional fifty dollars for those occurrences to retrieve their carts. And then, a super repeat offender, repeat offender would be five times in one month. Then, we would need to reach out directly with that business and work with them on modifying their plan up to and then requiring the installation of wheel locking systems or some other method for better containment. We did not start the ordinance off with requiring that immediately. We wanted that to come down the road, should there are efforts that they are proposing or not working, and they become repeat offenders, then we do want to step up some requirements.
Just a question.
Yes.
You mean, three times, three carts? We find three carts in six months?
Three carts in six months that are impounded, yes, it would be considered a repeat impoundment, and they would just pay the additional fifty dollars.
You're using this word impounded. You mean found, discovered, right, out?
Impounded would be kept here in City Hall storage.
You pick it up?
Picked it up.
Three times in six months?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Some examples, the top, the blue bar across the top, this is an example of a sticker that PetSmart is going to make should this pass, and this will go on their carts. Their carts are not completely identifiable and are not meeting the ordinance, so they have drafted this sticker. It meets all the requirements of the ordinance. It basically says, you know, you can't remove this cart from the site, and it does provide their store numbers as well as a telephone number. Should the cart be found off-site, they could be contacted to retrieve it, and it's costing PetSmart under five dollars a sticker to label their carts. So, I just wanted to share that with you, so you would know it's a minimal impact should a cart need to be modified. As most carts, like the one on the right, is the seat flap from a Walmart cart, it currently meets the requirements. They wouldn't have to make any modifications. It states the requirements, the cart should not leave, as well as they, Walmart has a national number that you can call, and then the, the cart is identified of what store it belongs to, and then they come pick up the cart and send it back to its location. So, they would not need to do any modifications. But we do come across carts, like in the bottom picture, that's really unidentifiable. It's been modified or altered. We don't know whose cart it is. That's one that would be immediately disposed of. Another cart on the bottom is identifiable to the retailer. That could be taken back and impounded, as I like to say, and then the retail, then returned to the retailer, because it can be identified. And then, as you, a common scene that we see is several carts gathered together from all different sources, some identifiable and some not. We did do outreach on this to, to work with our businesses. As mentioned, we have about forty-two businesses that have carts. We direct mailed them a letter to the business location. We also emailed the corporate office with the emails, the addresses that we have on file through their business licensing. We had one-on-one conversations. Regina had a number of one-on-one conversations with different retailers, explaining the ordinance and what was proposed. We have had this information available on the website, directed people to our shopping cart webpage. We did also attend the Sunrise Marketplace Board and the Chamber Board meetings. We attended the neighborhood associations, as mentioned earlier, and the other ordinance we went at the same time. Ordinance was generally supportive. We did not receive any opposition. We did receive feedback from some residents, though. Initial ordinance did call out some specific fines. It had dollar values associated with some fines, and that would be to the person that was in possession of the cart. That did cause some concern from the community, so we have removed that from the ordinance. It no longer is in there. There are no fines in this ordinance for the possession of a cart. We received mostly kind of the no-big-deal ordinance from our retailers, many of them corporate. As City Manager Feeny mentioned, this is a very common practice. The jurisdictions surrounding us have this in place already, and your retailers are pretty much used to doing this. So, that was, we didn't get any feedback or op, pushback from our retailers on that. There was mentioned at some of the board meetings, you know, how much it was going to cost of the businesses. I showed that example of the sticker that was going to be under five dollars a cart for that retailer to adjust their carts. So, very low impact. Many of them already have signs up, or their carts are already identified, and we're not charging for them to submit their retrieval plan, as mentioned, and they only need to do it one time. So, we did try to make it as little impact as possible, but have enough teeth and weight in it where we could work with businesses that continued to have carts escape their home base. And we know we're at the end of the year, getting into the Christmas season for our retailers, so we really did try to adjust our timeline to accommodate that. So, tonight is a public hearing. Should the item be approved, it would come back to you for a second reading on November tenth, and would then become effective thirty days following that. And so, the carts should be labeled and so forth in that timeframe, but we have pushed that out really until February twenty-eighth. We wanted to give them time to do it, get through the holidays, so the shopping cart plan and that would not be due until the end of the period, which would be February twenty-eighth, and then we would have them reviewed and back to them by March twenty-eighth. So, we did want to be sensitive to the holiday season. And with that, I have the recommendation and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from, okay, Mr. Daniels?
On the three-day issue of retrieving the cart, was that three business days? Just to be sure.
Yes. It's seventy-two hours.
Three business days?
Mm-hmm.
So, not weekends, not holidays? Okay. And then, and if I remember right, it was six times, and they would have to put in a locking wheel system?
It's one option that we could require.
So, it's, it's not a specific requirement, but it could be a requirement?
Correct.
And any idea what the cost is to put in a locking wheel system?
Um, varied, depending on the number of carts that they maintain and the size of their property, and-
We looked somewhere, it's approximately about fifteen thousand dollars on average.
So, if somebody gets one shopping cart a month found for six months, we could come back and say, you have to put in a system that's going to cost you at least fifteen thousand dollars, in theory?
In theory, but we could also continue to work with them and encourage them to have their retrieval service pick up on a more frequent base and do more sweeps through the city.
Okay. Okay. That's the only questions I have for now.
Steve?
Is there a possibility, like with our animal services philosophy of, let's find the home first instead of impounding? Saves everybody time, money, and get those shopping carts back to their home?
I think that's our general work philosophy that we would do. We don't want them to be stored in the, in the yard here, or keep them here, have people to come pick them up. The idea is to get them back home, but that is certainly a resource if we needed to.
I'm just wondering out loud about the carts that aren't retrieved or can't be identified. Is there a business that would reuse, recycle these carts instead of us throwing them in the creek?
We wouldn't throw them in the creek.
We wouldn't throw them in the creek, but the landfill.
And we can, we can look into that as an option, but a lot of the ones that we typically receive that are unidentified, they're pretty nasty, and so, they're not really ones that would want to be reused for human purpose use.
Yeah. I was just wondering if we could get our CSIs to identify some of those. Let's see. I think the, yeah, my question and cost was answered. Thank you.
I don't have a question. I think it's a reasonable approach. I just had a suggestion. I hear you keep saying repeat offenders, and honestly, the retailers aren't the offenders. They may not have the kind of response we want, but the offenders are the people that take the carts off the property, in my opinion. So, let's just come up maybe with another word, you know, impacted, you know, if they, if they ignore or don't respond with a, you know, to our notification. That's just semantics, I know, but I would feel better. Okay, thank you.
Well taken. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. So, when this is first, I noticed that you, you took some feedback from the community, basically saying that, you know, they, they felt that finding a homeless person is kind of not very fruitful, and I'd like to know if the business community offered any alternative programs that, that could, because it, you know, I talked to Kathy Lynn Carpenter this morning about this particular issue, just to get her feedback, and she told me that the retailers are against it. And I said, well, okay, so if they're against it, what's their alternative? So, did you hear anything from the real retailers that some kind of modification says, hey, we think this is a better idea, maybe instead of three carts in six months, it's ten carts in six months? Something that would be more palatable for them. So, if they had an issue, certainly, I don't see any, well, we haven't asked for public comment yet, but I'll be interested to see if anybody actually makes a comment. So, can you also flip back to the sticker that PetSmart was proposing? So, let's see. So, they are, so it's, so removable shopping cart is prohibited by law and shall subject the violator to a minimum of a hundred-dollar fine. That ordinance that's listed there, is that just an example, or is that actually something that they're going to impose? Can they, is that something they can, each individual business could say? All right, well, PetSmart be a, might be a hundred bucks, you know, Walmart might be, because Walmart already has the locking wheels. If you defeat the locking wheels, you are really after stealing that shopping cart. So-
I think they, they got that language, that was in the initial draft ordinance-
Okay.
-of those fines, but we have since removed that. So, they, this was just our draft.
So, there would be a-
So, it'll have to be modified.
Okay.
We did not, to answer your other questions, we did not hear any feedback from any businesses that were opposed to that. We had one retailer Regina spoke in depth with that had concerns. I think we addressed all their concerns. They didn't have anything, but as mentioned, most retailers were like, well, PetSmart wanted to go put the stickers on the next day, and I'm all like, no, no, hold off, because I think they're just so used to doing this. It wasn't, they just, okay, we'll do what you need to do, send us the forms, send us the application. So, we did not receive any feedback from the retailers directly, you know, against it or offering any alternatives.
Great. Thank you, Alison.
Okay. All right. This is a public hearing, and I will open the hearing. Any comments?
And Mayor, I do have one speaker on Zoom.
All right.
So, David Warren, you can now unmute your microphone to speak.
I've, I'm hoping that the letter that I provided to staff is included in the package since I can't attend, I, which I sent on October seventh, and I'm hoping that both staff and the city council members review the article I published on October nineteenth in the Citrus Heights Sentinel. This is a futile statute which will result in nothing. The interesting thing to me about the conversation tonight is there's been no discussion at all about the reason that these carts are taken. Unless you solve the problem of why they're taken, they will be, continue to be removed, regardless of whatever statute you pass. It's interesting to me that here we have people bringing shopping carts from Orange Vale by way of example, Winco, from Safeway in Fair Oaks, from Home Depot in Fair Oaks, from stores in Roseville. That will continue to be a problem. The problem is people need something to put their personal property in. If we can't solve the problem of where to put the homeless, so they don't have to store their, their personal property and shopping cart, the shopping cart problem will continue. The city has bigger problems, such as the amount of graffiti, which is showing up all over the city, which frightens me, because after graffiti comes gain possession of certain territory within our city. This is a statute searching for a problem that cannot be solved. Right now, the best example of the failure of this proposed ordinance is the fireworks ordinance. The city passed the fireworks ordinance to find property owners to make sure that fireworks, illegal fireworks, were not discharged. I live near the Crosswoods Library, and Fourth of July, the week before and the week after, sounds like a combat zone. The ordinance didn't stop it. There's not a police, not police officers to stop it, and we don't have the staff necessary to enforce it against the homeless. As long as the supply problem is not the issue, but the demand problem is the issue, this statute is, this ordinance is a waste of time and will only breed a lack of respect for our police officers and the ordinances in our community. Thank you.
Any other comments? No? We'll close that public hearing. Any comments from council, questions? Brett, I see you nodding your head.
Okay. So, I'm just, I'm, I'm really sick and tired of seeing people stroll down the street with a, there's stuff in a, in property that belongs to somebody else. You know, it's bright red, it belongs to Safeway, you know, if it's got a blue seat cover, whatever, it's, it's Walmart, whatever, but I know it's not theirs. And, and it just drives me nuts, just drives me nuts. And Mr. Warren brought up some good points, but that's not the issue we're resolving tonight, or trying to resolve. What we're trying to resolve is the issue of a business losing their cart. The carts don't escape, they're taken, and the businesses are not offenders, repeat offenders, they're victims. And so, I'm just baffled at why the focus is on the victim here and not on the offender. The offender had some focus, and somebody said, oh, my gosh, we can't do that, and now there's nothing on the offender. So, it doesn't matter if you do this. You got caught, oh, well, go find another cart. Got caught again, oh, well, go find another cart. It's stolen property, you know, and so, I, I hate to see us say that we're not going to have anything in this ordinance. I, I mean, there's other avenues. They can be charged with possession of stolen property, but I don't know if we do that. I, I don't know if we go that route. But I, I just, I'm kind of, I'm really disappointed. There's the chief jumping up, because he has the answers always, in a comical way, too. Yes, chief?
Don't showbiz me with the comedy, though. Alex Turkau, Chief of Police, Madam Mayor, members of council, just wanted to add in here a little bit. There is definitely, the presentation was focused more on where we had a lot of feedback around the businesses, but I do want to talk about the pivot that was made in the ordinance. It will still be unlawful to be in possession of the shopping cart, or the original- The original draft was an administrative citation, which only remedy is monetary, which, fair feedback, you're probably not going to see that money, and there wasn't an intent to have that money. There was an intent to have a penalty for the people to take the property. What we've done with, we've pivoted that to make it a misdemeanor. And so a misdemeanor, although technically more severe in the scale of criminal justice, is still a ticket that could result in a fine, could result in some other punitive action. Likely as long as folks are cooperative and those type of things, it's mostly just a ticket. Now, what it does allow us to do, though, for repeat offenders who have multiple tickets, is then engage our chronic nuisance offender program and be able to show, here's the offenses that have been committed, and go take more of a punitive action, whether it is receiving stolen property or the like. But I do see your point from where we've been talking tonight, but that's because there hasn't been a lot of further feedback since they made it to a misdemeanor. Very similar to our panhandling ordinance and our unlawful camping ordinance, both were misdemeanors for a similar reason.
All right, thank you, I really appreciate that, honestly. And again, I think that, I think our focus is too much, too heavy-handed on the victim of a crime. You know, again, we are really putting, we're codifying the ability to find somebody in a sense $15,000 because somebody stole one of their shopping carts once a month for six months. I just, there's no way I'm voting for this, just, I just cannot do that. I cannot, I cannot further victimize somebody who has had their property stolen from them. And I know then it's like, well, what do you do? You know, what do you do? I'd rather just see a process where there's retrieval, that, you know, I'd rather see a process where we work with those companies and hopefully they cover a cost of somehow to bring it back to them. If they don't want to be involved in that, then, you know, or we bring it here and they come and get it. And if they don't come and get it, I don't want to find them, then it's just like, we gave you this chance, we did this for you. You don't want to come and get it, guess what, it's going in the dumpster. And, you know, maybe you'll understand when you lose your carts, because these things aren't cheap. These things are expensive. And so I just cannot support something that says, I mean, good lord, we have three Walmarts that are either in Citrus Heights or on the edges and stuff like that. And I don't know why they like the Target carts, because they stand out, they're bright red, but those things are seen all the time. And to think that one of them a month could lead you into that kind of a fine, it just, I can't do that. I can't do that. I'd rather see us using some other approach to hopefully end this, because I do, I just go nuts when somebody's got somebody else's property, knowingly has somebody else's property, and they're using it, it's theft, they've stolen that shopping cart. And if they didn't steal it directly, they know it's stolen, which is a crime also. So I do want to see us do something, I just don't want us, to see us, what I would say, victimize victims after they've already been the victim of a crime.
Councilmember Daniels, if I may, I think I can help out a little bit on this. I think when we put tools in the toolbox, we have a hammer in there. You know, there's a hammer in this toolbox right here in this ordinance. Doesn't mean we're going to pull out the hammer and use it all the time, no. But with no hammer, then there's no compliance. And so I think for the way our team's looking at it, we're not looking to get a bunch of fines from this. We're not looking to make it hard on businesses. But those type of tools are really there for, if we have a bad actor that is just totally disregards the ordinance in general, is not playing well in the sandbox, it's a tool that we can deploy to bring someone into compliance. Our whole intent here is to have compliance and have people be good operators. It's not to make it difficult on our businesses. So I think that without having any kind of tools in the toolbox relative to fines or other measures for if we had a really bad actor, I mean, let's say if we had somebody that, you know, had 100 carts that we're dealing with over a period of three months, and then there's no, there's no, there's no fine, there's no, then all of a sudden we're disposing those, there's costs. So it's really just to make sure if we had a bad actor, we have some sort of tool to deal with them or to encourage them to comply. I think that that's more of the intent, and that's the way we intend to administer it.
I understand your point completely, I really do. Carrot and stick kind of thing, but I just can't support codifying, what I feel is victimizing a victim.
Steve?
Oh, well, I thought we'd try this out and tweak as needed. You know, there must be a full moon, Brett, because I agree with you in refining the victim.
What's the date?
Yeah, what's the moon like out there? And I'd love to see wheel locks on all future developments. I know we discussed this before and we thought it was cost prohibitive, but the expense of these carts, it's got to be far more than putting one of these systems in. And I found out Walmart had one when I parked too close to Costco, and I couldn't go any further. And so, and I don't see Walmart, but I know you probably don't know the percentage. I don't want to go after the homeless with this with all their belongings in one cart. But those trips from the store home, and again, I know why, they probably don't have transportation or, you know, it's a way to get in the grocery shops, but pretty soon there's five carts in the neighborhood to be taken by the homeless or to be thrown in the creek, whatever. And so, yeah, we've got a number of issues. I'm willing to try it out, but I'd like to hear how the other council members feel about these fines right now.
Jeanie?
I have a question.
My question relates to, where did you come up with the parameters? I'm reading repeat impoundments right now, section 50-913. Five carts within a 30-day period. Requires the business to do one of the following, then it goes into the locking or stopping mechanisms and so forth. Where do those numbers come from? I mean, you mentioned other city ordinances, is this modeling after what they've done, or?
It is taken from the Business Professions Code. It's in there currently. So it's repeating what's in the Business Professions Code.
Okay, so basically, we're taking what already exists in the Business and Professions Code and just bringing it down to a local level? And that's, the Business Professions Code addresses the state-level guidelines or punitive measures or whatever you want to say regarding shopping carts. Is that correct?
It talks about what is considered a repeat impoundment, I'll change my verbiage.
That's a really good one, thank you.
Took me a second. But it does clarify what is considered a repeat impoundment, which is the five times in six months, whatever that number was.
Well, this is five times in a 30-day period.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, you're right. Five times in 30 days is considered a repeat impoundment. Now, the requirement of the locking, that was what we put in the ordinance. Other jurisdictions do have very similar language, but that was what we put in there. We did hear back from the chamber, went to them, is they wanted the ordinance to be very clear and not have, the city may do this and this and this and require modification. They wanted it very clear so the businesses would know. So we couldn't just arbitrarily say, "You need to do wheel locking systems" or something. They wanted it specifically to address what would lead up to that requirement, so they would know.
Yeah, I would think that requiring wheel locks would be a final decision because of the cost. And I experienced what Steve experienced, I believe he said, one time when I parked in like the last parking spot in Walmart, I couldn't even get to my car. The wheels just locked that cart that stopped. So they do work, I know that. But given, particularly for a small grocer or other retail outlet that has a few carts, the cost of putting wheel locks in could be prohibitive for them.
Correct, and just to remind, this is when the city captures the carts. There's many times that the carts get returned to the retailer, we're not involved, or they go pick them up themselves. I mean, the encouragement is that they have a retrieval service in place or it doesn't get to that level. So this would only be those extreme cases where we're having to consistently deal with their carts. And as mentioned, it's really just a tool, it's not something that we want to do.
Right, I get that. I know that as our protocol and kind of our personality of a city has never been to be overly heavy-handed. You know, even if we could, we don't, you know. So, where was I going with that thought? Oh, so is today, do we, if we find, let's just say, a Target shopping cart in front of Fountain Square, do we contact Target and say, "You got a shopping cart in here," and give them the first opportunity to pick it up themselves? Or do we automatically pick it up and impound it until we've got a few and then we let them know? How do we do that today?
Currently, as I mentioned earlier, we do have a contract with a shopping cart retrieval service. That shopping cart retrieval service also has independent contracts with many of the existing retailers. So what we see is the retailers do not have a current contract. So your hardware, local store that rhymes with Mose, does not have a contract. So we pick up those carts and we bear that cost. If we see something immediately along our arterials that is a nuisance, our staff pick them up right now and we return those to the retailer. In instances where those carts are dirty, cannot be reused, those are then disposed of.
Okay, so when we return them to the retailer, do we just put them on the property? Or do we let the store manager know, or what do we do?
We are limited with our resources because we do only have a few staff members who are responding to everything within the city, within our 14 square miles. So at any given time when we are returning those carts, we are taking them back right into the store or to one of the corrals, and we are leaving. The contractor who picks them up on behalf of the retailers makes contact with those retailers because they need to have verification that they have been dropped off so they can be compensated.
Okay. How is this going to work with our, yeah, work with our beautification program? It seems like they kind of dovetail a little bit. Am I correct on that?
They sure do. It actually gives us the ability to get, if we see a cart, we can grab it right then. Right now, we can't. I mean, I think the state law allows a cart to land on the side of the road for 72 hours. That's what we're...
But we could tighten that within our jurisdiction and make it a tougher, we can't make it less, but we can make it more.
That's what we're proposing to do right now with this ordinance, is to allow us to grab a cart when we see it and take that cart in. I mean, another thing I'll just say, you know, we have the five, five in a month, we have X number in a six-month period. Those numbers, we can move those around a bit if the council is not comfortable with those numbers. I think the big thing is we just need to have some sort of, some sort of incentive in an ordinance to ensure that people are saying, "I'm not just going to disregard it, I'm going to try to comply with this." And if we have a serious offender that is repeat, and believe me, I'm sure they would be frustrating for your council, too, if it gets to that level where we're actually asking somebody to install a locking device, that would be kind of the last ditch effort, so to speak. But I think we have to have some sort of incentive, and really, I mean, as Director Cave was just speaking to, they already pay to retrieve carts, they just pay a service to go get them. And so it's just really, we have some costs associated with retrieving carts. First ordinance allows us to get the carts right away. Second, we do retrieve the carts, we have some cost to pick those up, we have some cost to store them, we have some cost facilitating having people come pick those up. So it is, I wouldn't call it a cost recovery, because it probably doesn't recover those costs, but I would say that it's just an incentive for people to comply with the ordinance. If three per month feels to be too much, we can make some changes to that right here. So if that's part of what the council's struggling with, that says, "Wow, this seems too restrictive with the number of carts to trigger a fine," that can be changed. And the other thing I'll say, we get something like this implemented. I'm a big believer in you try something, and if it doesn't work, or you get a lot of pushback from your business as a residence, okay, well, let's try something different. We can modify it. But as I said at the outset, do we nothing, we end up with the same result that we have today.
Right.
And so that's where I'd say if the council wants to look at, you know, some of those numbers, we can do that. I just wanted to open that up.
Thank you for that. Could you put the slide back that showed what those numbers are? Okay, so...
And these are, as mentioned, from the, I just want to say, as mentioned, these are from the Business Professions Code.
This is what the Business and Professions Code says, and this is not what we're adopting, though. So we're repeat impounds, we said five within... Okay, so looking at that and then looking at this. Five carts within a 30-day period. So this is, this doesn't even, this is five carts within a 30-day period require wheel locking. So do we just repeat in our, this section 50-913, what the Business and Professions Code has? Okay, so I think maybe we should work on those numbers a little bit. I just think that's really oppressive, quite frankly.
I can agree to that. Somebody throw out a number, is 10 a month a reasonable number?
Yeah, let's try that. I think, my thought is, let's be as kind as possible, and if that doesn't work, then we be less kind. That's kind of my thought on those.
Yes.
Okay, so maybe if we did 10 times, it doesn't require wheel locking. This is as it requires wheel locking. Let's maybe come up with other, something other than just that, you know.
Can I reiterate what we had mentioned earlier in terms of how many carts we collect a year and how many retailers we have that have shopping carts? So if we have 42 retailers with shopping carts, and we're going to give them a flexibility of up to 10 carts a month, that's 420 carts that we're talking about having capacity to be able to go and pick up.
But in all reality, Regina, will all 42 of those maximize the 10 carts per month?
We get right now anywhere from 10 to 20 from some of our bigger corporation retailers right now.
From some of them, but not all of them, that's my point. We're not going to have 420 carts. Well, maybe if those same people, repeat impounders, you know, neglect their carts, that's already over the limit that we're talking about. Am I making sense?
Mm-hmm, they're already over the limit, which is why we're here to introduce an ordinance, to be able to have that tool in the tool belt to require them to pick up the carts.
And I agree, we should have something. I'm just, I'm just a little uncomfortable with the low number. If they're already over the 10, they're already offending, so let's deal with them, you know, so.
If we had something that said, because let's say you had an ebb and flow, I'm just putting this out there, but if it was allowed us the discretion to require it, but doesn't, it's not an absolute that we have to require it, that's, I think, more of what we're looking to accomplish here. I think the philosophy you spoke to of, "Let's be kind and try to get people to comply," that's our general philosophy.
Yeah, and I believe it is.
So I think if we had some flexibility, and I think Casey might be able to speak to that.
Yeah, I mean, the code says the city reserves the right to require the business to do one of the following, and the locking wheels is one option, or not allowing carts is the other option. But we could also, those are, again, that's the hammer that we're talking about. Worst-case scenario, probably would never be applied, but if we don't have the threat of that, it's hard to get them to comply.
Right. Well, right, I get it, okay.
So I think also missing from this argument is, what do we expect them to do? You know, I mean, they're going to put a sign on their cart. The guy who steals the cart, he doesn't care about the sign, you know, we're going to put a sign at the, in the business, he doesn't care about the sign. What are they going to do? They going to put a guard out there, the cart guard? They're not going to do that, they can't do that.
I have a question, actually. So I'm looking at this chart again, and it says carts to retrieve within three days, three business days. There's no release fee, right? So if they're being diligent and they're going out and they're checking in, you're calling them and saying, "Hey, come get your cart within three days," and there's no fee. I see that that's like a pretty fair solution there.
I have a comment, Mayor.
And, yeah, and so then, but after that, you know, if it sits there for 40, 40 to 30 days, then obviously, you know, we're at the point now where you're really not showing any concern. I think that, to Jeanie's point, that 10, 10's a good number for me, okay? And if they give them between, within, you know, the three business days, fine. If they don't, they can pay the fee. Go ahead, Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you. So this is, I agree with the number, the 10, but I'm going to depart into my day job. So I sell battery-operated power tools, okay? Every single one of those battery-operated power tools has a little device in it, that's a GPS device. If it leaves the perimeter, it shoots up a message saying, "This has left the perimeter." If you're at the flea market and you're walking around and you have the app on your phone, it will tell you it's nearby, your tool is nearby. That's a really inexpensive technology that... That's a really inexpensive technology that all these companies could easily adopt. You could put it on a ladder, you could put it on anything, that they could adopt that doesn't cost $15,000. It's pretty darn cheap. So I just think that this, this might motivate some of our retailers who are, who might be encountering this to come up with a solution on their own, rather than us forcing them to do this. So, and anybody wants to know more about that technology, we'd be happy to share with them.
I, I like the technology option, and that's one of the reasons we tried to keep it flexible, because we don't know what everyone has access to and what their approaches are. Sometimes they can be as simple, one of the stores here has a pole on it so the cart can't go outside the door.
Yeah.
That works for us, right? We don't want it to leave. So I think the intent of this is to allow that flexibility and creativity in order to do that. But if you don't do something, that's when we have a problem, and now we have a tool to, to address that.
Okay.
I just want to say, where I would be, where I would be comfortable is if we stopped on this chart at the carts unidentifiable and did all those things. We're going to retrieve it, we're going to give it back to you, it's your property, we're going to give it back to you if you come and get it within three business days. If you don't, we're going to store it, we're not going to, you know, we're not fining you or whatever, we're going to store it, and you're going to pay us $25 to get it out of storage, and if you don't come and get it, I would say within 14 days, we're going to dispose of it and throw away the ones that you can't identify, because who are you going to call? So, and then if that doesn't work, maybe we come back in six months or, or whatever and say, you know, that's not working, we need more, more bite, we need more teeth, and let's go to this other, you know, let's go to a higher amount of money, let's go to a possible wheel, wheel locking system or something like that. I, again, I, I don't know what putting a sign on this, on the cart, putting a sign in a parking lot are going to do for anything. It's a criminal that takes this cart. It's not somebody who goes, you know, you know, oh my gosh, they got a sticker, I can't take the cart now. So I just don't see what the shopping, the center, the, the business owner is going to be able to do. And when you talk about six or more carts, that's nothing, that's a very small business might have just six carts, and they're not going to be able to hire somebody to stand in their parking lot to make sure nobody takes their cart. So I'd, I'd like to see us do a kindler, more gentler approach of retrieving it, getting it back to them if they don't want to come and get it right away, charging them some storage, and if they don't want to come and get it in a couple of weeks, we dispose of it. I, I got a feeling they, they're going to come and get it, you know, and if not, they'll send the cart retrieval guy over and pay him 25 bucks to go to the city, pick it up and bring it over to them, something like that. And I just feel like that's more of an approach that also takes into consideration that ultimately that, that business owner is a victim of a crime. Somebody stole his cart. It didn't escape. Somebody stole it.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you. So one thing I just want to remind what our General Services Director Cave mentioned is, it's about 2,000 carts, 2,500 carts a year, about 200 a month. Are we getting the, any feedback from retailers that they're concerned about losing 200 carts a month? Are they, what measures are they taking to take care of their own carts? So, and that's almost a rhetorical question, because they obviously don't care. They want, they want to stop us from doing this, but they don't really care that they're losing 200 carts a month. So I don't know how you make them care. I don't know how you convince them that they should care. So you can, we could certainly take out this fine and the wheel locking and everything, but maybe if we leave it in there, maybe they'll care. Maybe it'll change their, and again, one of the things, one of the other points I wanted to make is, we're focused on this particular ordinance. This is looking at the big picture. What are we trying to accomplish here? I just want to remind everyone that what the city manager's vision was, is that we want to really increase, improve the image of the overall city. And if we don't take measures like this and put them in place, what, what other ways are we going to use to accomplish that? So, you know, if you, if you don't like this, hey, let's try it. If it doesn't work, if it's, you know, if we really get pushback from the, from the community, again, that's a good thing, because then they care. So I, I think we should adopt this just the way it is, with the exception of I'd like to see 10 carts per month instead of five.
I echo that. And one question I have, though, because one of the things Brett said, if we change the carts retrieve of four to, to 30 days to a lesser time, doesn't that cause us more work? Because we're disposing of them more frequently rather than holding on to them?
Potentially, and we would also be coordinating, though, is with the cart retrieval company that works on our behalf, as well as works on behalf of most of the retailers, and they would be coming and retrieving those carts immediately.
Okay, so the cart retrieval companies are the ones that actually retrieve them from us?
Correct.
Not so much the stores themselves?
Correct.
Okay, so that might put some pressure on the cart retrieval companies to pick them up sooner so that they get paid, rather than have them sit in our property for another extra two weeks.
And puts a little more pressure on the retailers to keep their contracts with the retrieval services. That's a big challenge that we've had, because we don't have an ordinance in place, there is no incentive for those retailers to maintain those contracts.
Okay, so then if we have, if we change the carts retrieved from four to 30 days to four to 15 days, that could work to our advantage rather than our disadvantage. Am I, am I correct in, am I going down the right path on that or not?
Versus potentially accumulating unwanted carts here on campus.
Yeah, I, so I'd like to maybe suggest that we do, that was Brett's suggestion, cut that in half.
Okay.
And then they get, they dispose of, and suddenly they, as long as it's not putting a, a manpower burden on us, that's my concern.
I would just defer to our city attorney if that is legal. Is there anything within the existing?
No, you can definitely do it. You could shorten that, you could be more restrictive. And truthfully, even though you're lowering it to 14, 15 days, we still would then have the ability, if, if, the 20th day we still had it, there's no incentive, but we had to get rid of them before.
Right. But it puts them on notice sooner, and hopefully they'll respond. Just the fact that we're changing it should get their attention, I would think. So that, those are my suggestions.
And I could land on 15 days, 15 business days, which is three weeks.
Well, is the 30, 30 days calendar days or business days?
Got to be clear on that.
It would be calendar days.
Let's do calendar days.
So.
Cut it in half.
15, I mean, if you want, carts cost between, I did some research, between $179 and $243 a cart. If you want your cart back, you're going to come get your cart.
All right. Well, then let's make it 10 business days, because that would be consistent with carts retrieved. You, you, they're not going to come and.
20 minutes.
Yeah, 20 minutes. You're not going to come and get them on weekends and holidays and.
Okay, all right, Steve.
But they might.
It's just.
Well, they're not.
Or calendar days, just be specific there, don't just say days. I, I'm okay with calendar days, as long as we specify it.
So what's your preference? 10 calendar days or 10?
No, 10 business days.
10 business days, two weeks.
Because we're not open.
That's what you're aiming for, was two weeks, right?
Okay, all right. 10 business days, 10 carts a month.
We like the number 10.
Yeah, we're, we're here, we're down for that. Should have made it with, coincide with our city anniversary.
Are we, have we confused the situation or are we clear?
Do you guys know where we're going?
Can you just repeat it, just make sure I got it correct?
Carts, um, carts need to be retrieved within 10 business days, up to 10 carts a month before we start getting muh-hah about it, right?
That's what I thought.
So item three is still $25 a cart.
Yes.
But they've got 10 business days to get them, or they're gone. And then we're being more liberal on the repeat impoundments.
Got it.
Five to 10.
Okay, all right.
That was hard.
That was a tough one.
Thank you.
Does anyone have the motion?
Are you ready for a motion?
I am, I am so ready.
All right, so let me just, I'll give it a shot. So I'd like to move to.
Oh, wait, stop, hold on.
Oh.
Did I do public hearing? I got lost.
Yes.
I did it? Okay, great, all right. Yes, here we go.
So I would move that we introduce for the first reading and read by title only in the way of the full reading of the ordinance as shown in attachment two and as modified by the city council's recommendation to be an ordinance of the city council of the city of Citrus Heights, adding Article 7 to Chapter 50 of the Citrus Heights municipal code.
I second.
Motion by Bruin, second by Schaefer.
And that did change the, to 10 a month also?
Yes.
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Just got to double check. Okay, motion passes. Next item.
Thank you for that, I know that wasn't easy.
Yes, that was great.
The next item is regular calendar, item number 14. The subject is professional services agreement for investment management advisory services by Chandler Asset Management. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute, execute a contract with Chandler Asset Management for investment management and advisory services.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members. Tonight, we have the last three items from Admin Services to present to you, and I'd like to start off with the first item, which is the professional services agreement for investment management advisory services by Chandler Asset Management. So a little bit of background analysis, it is common to have a professional investment management of public funds, and with the rise in interest rates, there are opportunities, we feel, beyond our local agency investment fund, our lay funding. Staff concluded an investment advisory could provide us resources to manage investments. We issued an RFP in spring of 2022 and received six responses. In summer 2022, we interviewed the top three. The top was Chandler Asset Management, Government Profollio Advisors, and PFM Asset Management. All three are known, well-known across the state. Staff concluded that Chandler Asset Management was at the top, and we bring them forward today to present their piece. I'd like to introduce Chandler Asset Management.
Good evening and welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Susan, and thank you to Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members. Also want to extend my compliments to staff who have been polite, professional, and inquisitive in weighing whether or not our services would be a good fit for the city. And to introduce myself, my name is Neil Murthy, and I'm a relationship manager with Chandler Asset Management. And joining me are my colleagues, Cara Reiner Sanchez and Carlos Obletes, who are members of our investment team. First, I'd like to offer an introduction to our firm, if we go to the next slide. So Chandler Asset Management, we are an investment advisor under the Investment Advisors Act of 1940, and we get our name from our founder, Kay Chandler, who had worked as an investment officer for both the city of San Diego and for the county of San Diego, and she had identified a need for expertise in investing public funds on the part of public agencies. So with that, she and a group of like-minded individuals founded our firm in 1988, and we remain focused on investing public funds, not just in the state of California, but throughout the country. We maintain our headquarters in San Diego, and we are a California-based firm. Both my colleague Carlos and I are close to the Bay Area, I'm in Oakland, he's over in Novato. And what is it that we do? We build customized investment programs for our public agency clients based on their risk profile, their needs, and their specific circumstances. And also, as importantly, are things that we don't do. So we are not a multinational bank, we don't have any other ancillary banking services, we are narrowly focused on our fiduciary duty to manage your funds. And we are backed by a stable team of investment professionals with an average of over two decades of experience. So you think about the events of the tech bubble, whether or not it's the housing crisis in 2008, more recent with COVID or high inflationary environment, you have a steady hand managing your funds. So if you take a look at the illustration over to the right, you'll see about 85% of our clients are public agencies. If you were to break that down by headcount, about 95% by headcount are public agencies, and then about 75% are California public agencies. And if you look at the total amount of assets, you'll see that $27.2 billion as of the third quarter. I think we, in the finance industry, tend to pat ourselves on the back too much by how much of other people's money that we manage, but just know that we don't consider this as the true measure of our success. We really value the relationships that we've developed with our public agency clients. So with that, if we go to the next slide, this is really the true of our success. So we manage funds for over 100 public agencies. The city, we manage 56 cities in the state alone. And I'll give a call out to your neighbors, city of Elk Grove, Fairfield, live in the mounds over in Truckee and over at West Akron. Just know that you're not only in good hands, you're also in good company. So I will introduce my colleague Cara, who's going to talk.
Good evening. As my colleague Neil had mentioned, it's the relationships that we value, and the way that we maintain those is through our optimal investment program that you see here. Really what you see and our main focus is portfolio management is risk management. This is your money, we want to ensure that the liquidity and safety is always there for you. So the three icons across the top will just give you a very brief, good representation of how we work with our clients. So the first one is review the investment policy. This is really the risk management rules, the laws, best practices, California government code. We take all of that into consideration at the onset of the relationship. And before we start investing, that is the focus, let's talk about the investment policy, ensure that's up to code, ensure that we are all in agreeance. The next step that we'll do is we'll develop the portfolio strategy. So it's key, before we even start thinking about what we're going to do, we're going to sit down and talk about what the staff needs to understand, what we need to understand from staff, what the city's goals are, financial goals. And it's important to discuss even before we take any of the next steps that we have there about what amount of money or anything like that. The next step that we have is the active investment management, and this is where we come in and do the day-to-day responsibilities of the investment program. So my colleague Carlos and myself, along with the rest of our investment team, will do the day-to-day management, and that's the reconciliation, ensuring that you're investing to code, that the policy is, that the investments for the policy are in compliance. That'll be something that you'll see in the monthly statements and the quarterly reports that are produced for you. And this is really kind of the focus in buying, selling, ensuring that the brokers are ones that we approve of and that you're still within policy. We do the heavy lifting for you in this program here. At the end of the day, really what we bring to bear are these resources to enhance safety and liquidity, and these are often resources that not many cities have. So this is the value that we add and for you to review.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I just wanted to talk about the fiscal impact. Typically, the charge and what it is common within the industry is up to 0.1% of the average market value of the city's portfolio, and you would see that typically investment earnings have exceeded the fees. So it's similar to a 401K setup where you have a managed service and you see that a return greater.
So a 10th of a percent?
Yes.
Okay, because it said 1% in our staff report.
Sorry about that, I saw the point was missing.
Thank you.
But it is, and the resolution does reflect that as well as the contract.
Is that an annual fee?
Our recommendation is to approve the resolution, a resolution of the city council of the city of Citrus Heights, of California, authorizing city manager to execute the agreement with Chandler Asset Management for investment management and advisory services of the city of Citrus Heights.
If, did you have a question? Before we go to that, what is the potential size of investment that we could be turning over to them to manage?
So roughly for us, it would be about 20 million.
And they're guaranteeing a 10% return? Is that right?
Yeah.
I think Carlos can speak, maybe if you would like a little bit to the market.
Was it 10?
Council member, I wouldn't want the SEC to haul me away in handcuffs, we guarantee nothing with the capital markets. Here's what we do guarantee. My name's Carlos Obletes, I'm a senior portfolio strategist, and, and I've been doing this
I'm a senior portfolio strategist, and I've been doing this for a long time, about 28 years. Here's what we do guarantee. We guarantee that we're going to act as your fiduciary, which is a duty that's placed on us by the law as a registered investment advisor. It means that we act as an agent on your behalf. It's not a brokerage relationship where we're selling you securities out of an inventory that we may keep for ourselves to grow our own portfolio. We carry no inventory. Rather, we work as, almost as an extension of your team. So what we do guarantee is that when we place these investments, when we build this investment portfolio and develop this investment strategy for your investment program, it's going to follow California government code, and it's going to follow the city's investment policy. And that's key. Investing for local governments is very different than people's personal investments. It's very restrictive, and it has very specific and law-defined objectives. And it's also very public. It's also very bad if you don't have money available when you need it. So that's the focus of our approach. Cara talked about risk management. It's really about building a risk management program to generate excess returns above what you're doing now, but in a prudent manner and in accordance with state code.
Any other questions?
10%. You know, it always bothers me to see how low, you know, because it's so restricted in what we can do, that I just feel so confident that you guys are going to do better. I know that.
Well, in the 28 years that I've been doing this, I've never worked for an investment advisor in this space that hasn't paid for itself. You're thinking of the low-rate environment that we've lived in for the last 15 years. Definitely, we're living in a different environment today with 8.2% inflation and the Federal Reserve giving us five rate hikes since the beginning of the year, and the last three have been 75 basis points apiece, 3/4 of a percent apiece. That's mega tightening. And as a result, interest rates are significantly higher. Two-year Treasury yields were 75 basis points, 73 basis points when we began the year. They hit 4.6 last week. That's a very quick run-up in interest rates. It means that future earnings for the city will be higher. And that's, it also means that existing holdings go down in value. But that's an environment that we, we're not afraid of rising rates. That's what we do for a living.
Thank you.
Okay.
And that's why we parked our accounts in the local area investment fund, or Local Agency Investment Fund, was because we weren't getting anything anywhere. And we did want somewhat of liquidity. Are we restricted in our investments similar to how the state restricts CalPERS, the divestiture stuff?
From what you're allowed to invest in, yes. The Local Agency Investment Fund can do certain things that you cannot. Primarily, they go longer because it's part of the PMIA program, which has the state's money, which they can do different than you. But apart from that, they buy the same, or they're allowed to buy the same sectors that you are. In practice, that team restricts itself, at least from longer-term bonds. You're only allowed to invest in the bond markets. It's really a safety liquidity portfolio. You can't buy stocks or anything like that. So in those, in that sense, yes. The, I would say the main difference that you will be doing, California government code generally restricts your maturities to five years or less. You can go longer if the city council gives special permission to do that on certain asset classes. But that's generally not conducive to the operations portfolio of a city. Normally, you might see that with a joint powers insurance authority with longer, longer duration liabilities. That's not a city. So five years or less. Life, the state pool averages about 300 days. They stay much shorter because they have to provide liquidity to all their participants. And almost every city in the state, I can't ima, I don't know of any other local government in the state that doesn't participate in life. I might know one or two that don't.
Thank you.
Well, with that said, then I will move that we issue a resolution to authorize our city manager to execute the agreement with Chandler Asset Management, Inc., for investment management and advisory services for the City of Citrus Heights.
I second.
Motion by Bruin, second by Schaefer. All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Congratulations.
Welcome.
Thank you.
We're working with you.
Next item, please.
Next item is regular calendar, item number 15. The subject is financial update. The recommendation is to review the information presented on the preliminary general fund operating results of fiscal year 2122, the general fund reserves and expenditures for the first quarter of fiscal year 2223, and the updated 10-year financial forecast.
Thank you. Good evening again. I have with me Tammy Nasrati, our finance manager as well, here tonight. So presenting to you our preliminary findings. We are going to review today our fiscal year 2122 unaudited general fund preliminary results, and then we will move into our 2223 first quarter general fund results, and then just briefly review the 10-year forecast with you. So starting with our year-end fiscal 2122 results, sales tax came in at about 14.4 million. It's just slightly over what we were budgeting, about 300,000. And that's primarily due to inflation. Naturally, as costs have gone up, so has the tax. Building and permits up about 2.4 million, at about 2.4 million, excuse me. And that's basically the increase in residential and commercial building activity that we've seen in the market. Community center, we're seeing a little bit more of activity going on at the community center with the ease of COVID restrictions. So that came in at about 200,000. And under other revenues, that's typically reimbursements that we receive for recovery of costs to city property. And then the other one was the reimbursement of the annual liability coverage that we have. On the expenditures end, we saw significant labor savings of 2.4 million for the police department. 1.6 million of that was due to the offset of the ARPA funding, and the other portion was due to vacancies. Operating cost savings of about 1.2 million, that's on all other general operating costs, such as your conference and trainings, your contract professional services, as an example. And last but not least, the major one, we did pay off our line of credit of $3.5 million in March. So where does that put us? We budgeted a total revenue of 35.2 million, with our total expenditures coming in at 33.8 million. We were forecasting at about 1.4 million in net operating position. Our general fund balance was projected, or was ending at 8.4 million. So as you can see, our actuals for our revenue came in at about 1.5 million over, and our expenditures below budget at about 3.6 million. So that resulted in a net operating position of 6.5 million. Taking out the line of credit payment that we made of 3.5 million, we were at a surplus of 3 million. So that is a reserve deposit and putting our general fund reserves to 11.4 million. And moving on to our first quarter results for 2223. Just a brief review of our operating revenue. These are our top three revenue generators. First is sales tax at 14.3 million is our budget for this coming year. Just to note, there is a two-month lag. So naturally, with three months and a quarter, we've only received one month worth of revenues, and that's about at one point, at 1 million even. Motor vehicles and lieu, we have not received that. We are budgeting at 10.3 million, but those are made in two installments. So we expect to receive our first payment in January and our second in May. Property tax, finally receive our first payment here in January of 2023. So again, two installments, May, January and May, totaling 6.8 million budgeted. It is important to note that revenues are cyclical. So there is that need for our general fund reserves to be up and to be able to manage the cash flow. And our expenditures have been fairly consistent, and you'll see they're at about 29%. So being a quarter of the year in, that's pretty close. And does, you know, prove the reliance on having cash reserves so that we can have that smoothing approach to fund our expenditures. Budgeted total revenues for this coming year is 42.1 million, with expenditures at 35.4 million. So we are projecting a 6.7 million surplus this year. Again, it is important to note the revenue lag. So you are seeing that quite low, at only about 6.9%. It is the lag. Not to worry, we have about 2.7 million that's come in with our expenditures on target at 10.5 million. So we do have that deficit currently, but, you know, we'll see that come through with the revenue lag. I also wanted to provide an update on our ARPA funding. So just, this is a brief overview of where we are today and stand on our ARPA funds. And you can just quickly see here all of the approved ARPA funding that we have brought to you and committed. And we do have some actuals that we spent, and as noted earlier, on staffing of the police department, of what was actually spent, and our small business COVID grant recovery programs. So with that, we have a remaining fund balance of 8.04 million. Moving on to our 10-year financial forecast, it was last reviewed in June of 2022. And just updates from then that we have, we've added the additional year, fiscal year 3132. We have the adopted budget reflected in there for this year. Updated pension unfunded actuarial liabilities. And we have, I will show and describe, we have partial funding of street repairs plus the Auburn Boulevard city match. Again, this is, and I know you guys received in your packet a more detailed version, but just a quick overview, you can see our ending reserves. It is important to highlight that we have the 17%. You can see we are meeting the reserve targets for city council policy. And also, we're doing well with city manager target reserves at 25%. We are, just to know, on the street funding for repairs, we have about 34 million that we're targeting over 10-year period. There is a need of about 12 million annually. So you just see the 4 million per year reflected right now.
So Susan?
Yes.
With regard to the 4 million, that's out of our general fund. We'll still have SB1 and Measure A funds to add to that as well. Okay.
I believe so.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it for that item. This was an informational item. Just to receive and file. Any questions?
And the 12 million is based on 120 million over 10 years?
The 12 million is annually, in an annual need.
10 years, it'd be 120. I suspect that's gone up, way up. So we need to keep an eye on that. Because the more we let it go, we'll never catch up.
I will work with Director Cave to update that, especially as we start to model out our next two-year budget cycle.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next item before council is regular calendar, item number 16. The subject is a request to utilize the American Rescue Plan Act funds to upgrade major critical information and technology projects and execute a contract with Tyler Technologies. There's two resolutions before council, a resolution authorizing the city manager to utilize the ARPA funds for information technology, hardware, and software critical projects, and a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Tyler Technologies for an enterprise resource planning system.
Okay, thank you again. And I have our IT analyst here, Patrick Liu, joining me as well today to answer any IT questions. So a little bit of background analysis, as part of our strategic goal for the, that was set in May, we were to provide, present to city council for direction, options, and recommendations on replacement of our current enterprise financial software. That stemmed from the fact that our financial software is, Eden, is going to become obsolete in 2024. And upon further research and discussing with staff, we, COVID also brought to light that we have a need for technology updates to communicate effectively just citywide in general. So with that, ASD staff met with key staff across the organization. We talked about business licenses, permits, code enforcement, finance, HR, and payroll. And it was evident that there is a need for operational, interdepartmental operational efficiencies. We are on several separate systems. There was also a need for outdated hardware, and this is where Patrick can answer any additional questions, but we have clusters, data backup systems, and switches that need to be replaced. They have been deferred for over a decade, I believe, warranted and re-warranted a few times. And where typically the standard replacement cycle for these would be about five to seven years. So the other focus was enhancing community service while improving efficiency and effectiveness. There is an AB 2234 mandate that's expecting for us by January 2024 to mandate online permitting systems, so and expedite approval of housing. And that includes planning, building, and civil permits to be able to have live update, real-time improvements. Tyler Munis, which we are going to present to you today, was one of the ones selected that covers many of these items that we are looking to enhance, and more specifically, also addressing some of these mandates coming down the line. It puts every, it puts all the systems on one system, basically. So with that, I'd like Chris, and I don't want to mention his name, I'm sorry, from Tyler Technologies.
Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing me to say a few words tonight. And I promise I will keep this short, as we are the last item on the agenda. As Susan said, my name is Chris Deroch, and I'm an account rep with Tyler Technologies. And just want to say a few words about why I feel Tyler is a good fit for the community. As you may be aware, Tyler has, the city has been a client of Tyler's for the past 12 years, utilizing the Eden platform as its main ERP focus. And so, like Susan mentioned, we are proposing, or Tyler has put forth, the Munis, or Enterprise ERP powered by Munis platform, as well as our enterprise permitting and licensing solution as the fully integrated solution across the board that's going to allow the city to, to not only have data flow more efficiently and effectively, but to also help reduce paper, also help reduce the need for in-person visits. One of the things that Tyler has been doing, really for the past 35 years, is focusing on the public sector. Building out products, building out services, whether it's organically or through acquisitions. It's what we've been doing, and it's what we're going to continue to do for the foreseeable future. Because of that, we've become the largest software provider solely focused on working with the public sector. And we've gained the trust of local, state, and federal governments, as well as K through 12 school agencies. Strength in some of our numbers, just a few that I want to point out here. We are included in the S&amp;P 500 index, and last year, we did about 1.6 billion in sales. This year, we are trending to be at about 1.9 billion. Something that I wanted to focus on really quick here is the sense of a thriving community. And from what I've gathered so far tonight, that's what Citrus Heights is, and that's what they're moving forward with. Some of the key benefactors of going with our enterprise permitting licensing system, which is shown here in this diagram, is an ecosystem that is centered around a thriving community. So not only providing tools for your staff to better service your clients, but what it also allows you to do is to improve the communication through workforce mobility, mobile apps that can be used in the field, whether they're connected to the internet or not. That data can be collected onsite without the need to bring heavy devices, or without the need to have those folks come into the office to have those conversations. Another is going to be our self-service platforms. So the ability to push out electronic plan reviews back to the planning department to have them review, mark up, and then push right back out to your general contractors so that they don't have to come in, do the meetings, carry the scrolls of paper, do all the markups in-house. Everything can be done electronically. It's going to save time, and it's going to save money. Our enterprise permitting and licensing solution, as well as our enterprise ERP solution, all combined is going to help create a better flow across the board. It's going to help create a better connected community, which is what Tyler's main vision is, is to see communities across the board using Tyler products throughout your departments, throughout your agencies, so that you have sort of a single platform of data stream, that is streamlined and made more easily accessible to everybody, whether it's the person working in the planning department, or it's the general contractor who is trying to help build up your community. And last but not least, our presence in California. This list right here just covers all of our enterprise ERP clients. But we do add about another 50 to 60 clients that specifically just use our enterprise permitting and licensing solution. So we have a great deal of, we have a very good presence here in California, and it's one that is, that is growing each year with new selections of our Tyler products. one that is, that is growing each year with new selections of our Tyler products. That is all that I had. Are there any questions that I may be able to answer?
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. How old is the Eden system that we're using now?
How old is the Eden system? It was developed, I believe, in the 70s and acquired by Tyler in the late 90s.
And how long has Citrus Heights been using Eden?
My records show, I believe, since 2010.
Since 2010, so about 12 years or?
About 12 years, yes.
Okay, so of this new system, what's the new system called?
Fancy name is enterprise ERP powered by Munis.
Okay, all right.
Munis was the original name until we did a restructuring of all of our product naming conventions back.
And what's the lifespan of that product?
Uh, it was.
The existing product. What, what do you expect the lifespan to be? When, when will we be looking at, have you come back and talked to us again about?
About the next shiny solution. I hope to not have to do that anytime soon. We invest, last year we invested roughly $20 million into R and D, just into our enterprise ERP solution alone, so that it can be one of the top players in this market space, competing with the likes of Oracle and Workday, who really are our two major competitors.
I'm just trying to get to, when you develop a product, at what point does it become obsolete, and you're not going to support it anymore, just like you're, we're doing it?
Yeah, that's a very good question. You know, over the last, so Munis was, was purchased by Tyler a few years before it purchased Eden. And for a long period of time, they went head to head in, in all of our RFP responses. We would bid both of them. And before they were, they were both part of the Tyler umbrella, we would go head to head with Eden. But once Munis was acquired by Tyler, which was a company that was, is based in Plano, Texas, Munis was a company that was started in Falmouth, Maine, which is local to where I'm from. Tyler made the president of the Munis company, the CEO. And so moving forward, there was a consolidation of ERP solutions. Over time, we've made a number of acquisitions, companies that had ERP solutions, wasn't necessarily what we were going after, it was other products in their portfolio. So as we start to consolidate, Munis has been the one that has also been our biggest revenue generator for a number of years now.
So just to be honest, so I have lots of big customers in, and I called a couple of customers and think they're worrying about their ERP systems. There's various different types, and I understand you're in the, in the public sector, but one nightmare I heard was, we just replaced it five years ago, now we've got to spend another million to replace it five years later. So these are all concerns that I have when it comes to, we're looking at this, we want a robust system, something that might look expandable, how expandable is it? If we decided to take on a parks department, or a fire department, or some other, what would be, is this the right software for us? Are we going to need to go to the next level of software if we decide we're going to, we're going to add departments?
Sure. No, I mean, with Munis, with enterprise ERP, which is powered by Munis, it works for clients that have a few hundred employees. It works for our clients that have several thousand employees.
Okay.
So it is scalable across the board to meet your needs, and it can work efficiently with any number of departments, whether it's just a handful, or whether it's, you know, 20 to 30 different departments that have different needs for an ERP solution or a permitting and licensing.
So my next questions are going to be more, a lot more specific to what we have, what we're actually going to be purchasing. So the number I'm seeing is just a little under 1.2 million to do this implementation, correct?
No, if I may clarify, the Tyler piece is about 860. The other piece is a separate IT request for hardware upgrades that we are, have lagged because we have kind of kicked the can down a road for a decade.
So last year, we had a budget item, though, that we were actually budgeting about, I want to say 600,000 for this or so.
Correct, just under 500,000.
Financial software, this includes permits?
Right, yeah, I get it, I get that. So, so then, so then there's going to be a maintenance, is there a maintenance for the year two through whenever? There is a maintenance cost of, what's that maintenance cost? Is that right?
Yeah.
It's a net increase of 106,000 when we're combining all our other softwares as well that we're maintaining on.
I think, but the Tyler specifically, is that about one, I think it's like 182, 186, but we can learn.
125 or 150. One moment.
Yeah.
186, sorry, yes.
186, but the net impact over what we have already projected will be.
Right.
So we have six others.
In the, all the budget, we're looking, all in, we're looking at, you know, if we were to amortize it over, say, the next 10 years, say, this is what the lifetime is. All I'm trying to sort of wrap my head around, believe it or not, as, as I surveyed the people that I know who have similar systems, this is actually right in line with what they spend. This isn't anything earth-shattering, so I don't mean to grill you too hard, but at the same time, I think we all need to understand that, yeah, we're probably in 10 years, we're going to have to look at another million plus again.
I would beg to be fair.
Okay.
I would beg to be fair.
All right.
Yep.
I mean.
Tyler's not going anywhere, and our Munis, our enterprise ERP solution isn't going anywhere. We're expanding it to meet the needs of our growing customer base. You know, right now, I'm working on an RFP for Hawaii County, and they have a very, very large budget and a lot of employees, and so we can meet the needs of them. I think we'll do just fine to meet the needs of Citrus Heights and hopefully keep you as a client for, you know, extended period of time.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Last question for you.
Yeah, you're not off the hook yet, sorry.
Staff could probably answer this, but customization, what level do we have, like
with templates for reports and even inputting? And, and again, this may be staff can answer better.
It's a staff question. Is it adequate enough to do what you guys need to do?
Right.
It is, it does that and much more, is what we're realizing, because of the ease of communication between even departments with having the other departments come on to this one system, instead of pulling from several different reports, what, and Tammy could definitely explain more, and I've seen her go through it, where she's trying to reconcile different reports, different systems, and in finance, it can be a little bit of a nightmare, takes her a few hours, several hours to kind of get each report done. So definitely would be nice to have and create some workload efficiencies, for sure.
Now, is this just for, for city hall, or will it include modules for the police department?
There is a code enforcement module as well.
Okay.
Within there, so we have that option as well.
And of course, their paychecks too, right?
For, yes.
Yeah.
Payroll as well.
Shows up.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, we have, unless there's any more questions, we have two motions before us. We have to take them separately, something about Ryan and doing it right.
Hmm.
Yeah, so, motion one.
I'd move that we approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to utilize the ARPA funds for information and technology hardware and software critical projects.
Second.
I'm going to give that one to Mr. Daniels. Motion by Miller, second by Daniels. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next one.
And also move that we authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Tyler Technologies for the use and implementation of enterprise resource planning, system software, service, and maintenance agreement.
Second. Okay, motion by Miller, second by Daniels. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, please.
Thank you.
Next item is department reports, and there are none. Next item is city manager items.
I just have about 15 slides to run through here. Oh, okay. I promise it'll be brief and that, but there's still exciting updates that need to be shared.
The room might be empty when you get.
All right, so if we can go to the next slide quickly here. Hey, great news, on Tuesday, November 1st, the groundbreaking of the Arcade Cripple Creek Trail in Citrus Heights, something we're very excited about that this council had spent a lot of time with and authorized, and so we've got a 2.9 million, 2.9 mile, excuse me, million miles, wow, we'd be around the world. But 2.9 mile multi-use trail, and it's going to be a terrific community amenity for cyclists and pedestrians and everybody that enjoys the trails here in Citrus Heights. So definitely something to be celebrated, Tuesday, November 1st at 9:00 AM. The address there is 6377 Bonham Circle, so very much looking forward to that. Can I go to the next slide, please? Some terrific news, the mayor mentioned, it was kind of this just in, right before the meeting started, received a call, and this is kind of, this is a testament to what we've talked about as part of our focus area work plan, and a lot of the work we're doing, having terrific jurisdictional partners, keeping up those relationships, being in the know, and being involved, and I think this is a testament to that, with CACOG funding the Sunrise Tomorrow infrastructure support. We had released an RFP to help build a financing plan for Sunrise Tomorrow. Fortunately, it's going to be paid for with a grant. So now I should say, I gotta, I gotta be careful not cash that check before it's written, but it was CACOG's staff that's making a recommendation to their land use committee, who will review this on November 3rd. So there's a couple of steps, but it's a very promising development, and I asked if, was it liberty to share, and they said absolutely, so wanted to do that. So some more exciting news, and that concludes my comments.
Okay, next item.
Next item is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
Okay, well, I'd like to look at support to direct staff to research a economic development grant and or loan program for distressed properties located within the Sunrise Marketplace overlay zone when it becomes effective.
Second.
Third.
Fourth.
All right.
That was easy.
It must be a full moon, I tell you what.
Yeah.
And with that, we are adjourned.